There's some water over there.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Monday, November 24th Board Meeting. We're on Monday because it's Thanksgiving holiday. And so with that, if we could please get started with roll call. District one.
Yes, good morning, everyone. And Vice Chair, thank you for chairing this. As you know, I'm here with family medical problems. So very pleased that you're all taking taking charge and great to see you all. My name is Patrice Horstman. I'm District One Supervisor and Chair of the Board. And happy Thanksgiving to you all. Certainly grateful for my colleagues and the county staff. So thank you. Good to see you all this morning.
Thank you, Chair. District two, Heronimo Vasquez Supervisor, current Vice Chair. And because our Chair is out of town, I will be chairing this meeting. So thank you. District three.
Good morning, everyone. Tammy Ontiveros, District three.
District four.
Good morning, everyone. Judy Begay, District four Supervisor. And just want to say thank you for all being here today. And then happy Taji Day. So in Navajo, taji means turkey. Okay? Thank you.
All right, District five.
Good morning, Lena Fowler, District five.
Thank you. Now, if you could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we'll now have call to the public to allow for any comments from the public. Please note that issues presented during the call to the public that are not on the agenda cannot be acted on by the Board of Supervisors. For items not on the agenda, individual supervisors may ask questions of the public but are prohibited by open meeting law from discussing or considering the item. Only the speaker who has been called upon is authorized to speak. To encourage and respect expression of all views, we ask that there are no disruptions. Individuals are limited to three minutes for their comments. Clerk Daly will explain how the public can provide comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Vasquez. At this time, if there's anyone that would like to provide a comment, we have comment cards by the door on the table. Also, there's not a whole lot of people here in the room, so you can make your way up to the podium as well. If you've joined us on the YouTube streaming, you can email your comment to boardcomments@coconino.az.gov. And I will read your comment for you. Again, if there's anyone here in the room, you can make your way up to the podium and we'll allow three minutes to speak. It looks like Chair, we do not have anything in our inbox and we do not have any comment cards.
Okay, we'll wait 30 more seconds if anybody appears.
We still do not have any comments or comment cards.
Okay, in that case, we will move on from public comment. And now we'll go to our consent agenda. All items under consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by a single motion. Are there any items that Board members want to consider separately? Supervisor Ontiveros.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to remove item number three, please.
Okay, item number three. Are there any other items?
Item number four.
Number four.
Items number three and items number four. Thank you. Any other items? In that case, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items number three and item number four?
So move.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ontiveros. Do we have a second? We have a second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, thank you. Now, item number three, consideration and possible action to approve a budget amendment for the county manager's contingency budget to facilities' operating expenses for security services at 110 East Cherry and Board of Supervisor meetings in the amount of $95,000. And with that, I'll pass it over to our county manager.
Vice Chair Vasquez, Erica Philpott, Deputy County Manager. So thank you for pulling this item. As the Board is aware, we have been piloting new security in two of our buildings, both here at the 219 East Cherry Building and at the 110 East Cherry Building, and been working with an outside security group to provide security for our meetings and for our staff and our public at both of those facilities. And so this item is to move money from the county manager's contingency budget to facilities for that, for this pilot. And as we look forward to looking at security across the county and where other security improvements can be made, then we'll bring those back during the budget process. But certainly, we're moving forward with different security all the time and staying up to date with current security techniques and being responsive to needs. And I know Tom Hanacheck is here if there's further questions about the security being offered. But this item is to move that money.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions by Board members? Supervisor Ontiveros.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Ms. Philpott, for that explanation. And I just want to note that we are aware that elected officials have been under increasing threat as it states in our Board Packet, both locally and nationally. And that threat is for bodily injury against someone. I have no sense of security with what we have going on at our front door. And let me explain what I mean. There is a nylon movable border that a child could push through. I think we need to be honest about this. And if somebody really intended bodily harm and physical threat to this Board, that is not sufficient. But you know, when I do feel, and I also want to state that it says in here as well, that the security guard that we have is unarmed. Now, if somebody intends to harm this Board or any of the staff in here, they are most likely going to be armed when they do that. So in my opinion, an unarmed security guard is in no way going to neutralize that threat whatsoever. But I will tell you when I feel very safe in these meetings is when I see one of our uniformed, armed Coconino County Sheriff's personnel sitting in this room. I feel very, very safe. I personally do not think that this is adequate and that it's $95,000 for something that is really doing absolutely nothing. That's my take on it. But I do want to hear what my fellow supervisors feel.
Thank you. Supervisor Begay? Oh. Supervisor Horstman, sorry.
Get this? Yes, I am unmuted. Yes, thank you. And thank you for your comments, Supervisor Ontiveros. I have noted the similar nylon rope. And some of the Board members may recall the discussions we had about changes to our Board of Supervisors Room about three, four years ago to handle some of these security concerns. And my concerns go much broader than just the Board of Supervisors. It's everybody who's in that building. And quite frankly, everyone who is in the 110 Building. And 110, given the folks that are in that building and the departments in that building, certainly have very important safety concerns as well that need to be addressed. So the $91,000, $95,000 we're talking about, it's a good start. And I think it's essential. And so I'm going to certainly agree with this and will vote for it. But it's just the beginning. We've got to deal with this. And nobody likes to deal with it. Nobody even wants to talk about it. So almost by calling attention to it, you make things less safe. But I think that we have had discussions on the need for increased safety. Our department heads from 110 and also within our own building itself have also talked about that. And so I think this is a start. But there's a lot more that we must do for the safety and security of all of us and our staff. So thank you. Really appreciate it. And look forward to continuing discussions on this.
Thank you. Supervisor Begay.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and Chair. You're chairing this meeting, okay? But anyway, I just want to say that I think metal detectors would really work. And I know they're expensive, but I think it's worth, especially if we're going to be protecting the staff and anybody that comes into this building that may be doing business. So I just wanted also for the two comments that were made by other Board members, I feel the same way too. But you know, I think we've got to take this seriously and you know, we need to move forward with it. And also, this room, we've been wanting to have it renovated and you know, some things done to it. But you know, it's been about the second year when we came on for our first four-year term. But we like to have this taken seriously. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you. It is certainly a start. And I'm not sure exactly. I think this can be just a start. And knowing that we will need to allocate more funding for a full safety measures that needs to be taken. We already have plans that were, we had discussed. And I want to go back to those plans as Supervisor. Our Chair had just mentioned and other Board members. So I think we need to just move in that direction. And I'm happy that this has come to the Board. So knowing that this is just the beginning. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I concur. I agree. This is just a pilot. And so we're looking at what kind of security measures we need to take to make sure that our elected officials, but also staff and the public who come to these meetings are safe. And so as was mentioned before, we will have a more in-depth discussion during budget time. And so I think this is good that we're doing this between now and then to get that sense of what we need to do to adequately protect our Board chambers and our elected officials in the 110 Office and the staff here more thoroughly. And so I think in May, or April, May, when we have our budget discussions, I look forward to that robust conversation. But I agree, it's also important that we're having the conversations so that it's on our mind and we're thinking about it so that we can find those little gaps in security that we need to fix so that we can be safer. Thank you. And with that, are there any other questions or comments by Board members or by staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Board, appreciate the conversation. I know Tom Hanacheck is here as our facilities director and really appreciate, really, the 110 Building with our increased service at that building with early voting registration, for example, and early voting as well as treasurer office operations. And so all of our operations really make us think about the security that we have in our buildings. And we will further this discussion. So really appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? In that case, can I get a motion to approve the budget amendment for the county manager's contingency budget to facilities' operating expenses for security services at 110 East Cherry and the Board of Supervisor meetings in the amount of $95,000? We have a motion by Supervisor Begay. Do we have a second? We have a second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Motion passes.
Vice Chair Vasquez, I didn't vote. I would like to vote nay.
Oh, excuse me. I apologize.
No, that's fine. And I want to vote nay for the reasons that I stated in my opening comments. And I also appreciate, I'll just say that I appreciate the conversation that we've had this morning. But I still stand by saying that what we have does nothing to truly prevent bodily injury from happening to one of us today.
Thank you for that. And just so that we get it clear for the record, why don't we vote again? So all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
All right. Motion passes. Four yeses and one nay. Thank you. All right. Now, moving on to item number four, consideration and possible action to approve a budget reallocation distribute budget authority into department budgets in order to cover the cost of compensation adjustments that will be effective with the pay period starting January 3rd. And with that, I'll hand it over to our management office.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Can I say something first? As I pulled in.
Supervisor Begay.
Thank you. I just wanted to take this aside and for us to discuss. I think I'm just kind of thinking that for transparency, I just want to make sure that, you know, we all understand what's going on with the funds and how we're going, why we're doing the adjustment and for the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Begay. And with that, I'll pass it over to Deputy County Manager Philpott.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and Supervisor Begay. So this item is, it is worthy of additional conversation. So thank you for that. So in the last budget process, the Board approved compensation adjustments for regular employees, continuing the longstanding commitment to compensation. And in July, eligible employees received a compensation adjustment. And the Board also, all of you, anticipated the increase in the Flagstaff minimum wage and what that was going to do to our entry-level positions, really the foundation of our workforce. And so during that budget process, the Board set aside some money for a possible mid-year adjustment while maintaining a balanced budget for the organization. And finance did come back and help look at that uncertainty that had occurred in the first half of this fiscal year with the Board and discussed that mid-year adjustment. And we're excited that the Board indicated that we'd like to move forward with the mid-year adjustment. We discussed that at the retreat. And so this is taking the money, this item on consent, item number four, is taking the money that the Board set aside in the last budget process and moving it to the departments so it will be ready for the mid-year compensation adjustment. That mid-year compensation adjustment would be effective on January 3rd and be in the paychecks that are paid out on January 22nd. And the Finance and the Human Resources Team worked really hard on the thoughtful scenario that came forward to the Board for mid-year. And once this is approved, then we will share a global email with the organization, letting them know the specifics of that mid-year and how thoughtful it was, and really addressing two things. One, the rising minimum wage, but also recruiting and retaining our employees so that they can do the important public service work to community. We all know that during times of uncertainty, we have more requests for service than ever before. And the work that our staff does intensifies and increases. And so we want to show those employees that we know that there are a lot of people asking for that service right now and that we value them. We talk about employees being our most valuable asset quite a bit. This compensation, this mid-year compensation adjustment moves the ranges as well as the people to help the beginning entry salary of our compensation structure to be further away from minimum wage.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions by Board members? Supervisor Horstman.
Yes, just a comment. And I appreciate the update. And yes, we did during our budget process, talk about the possibility. We've seen where we are in the attempt to maintain fiscal responsibility for the county. We were very cautious on our employee compensations, recognizing how important our employees are to all of us. And quite frankly, now more than ever, with what we are seeing going on in the country, the county and the services and the commitment that we and our employees make is even more essential to ensure health, safety, and welfare of our community members. And you know, quite frankly, we couldn't get it done without our staff. I am very supportive of going forward with this because we are able at this point. And I think we also need to keep a close watch on it as we move forward and as we go into our budget process for 20, for the upcoming fiscal year. But I certainly am so appreciative of the work of our staff. I'm also appreciative, and we should note that besides the commitment of the Board of Supervisors, our county management is also very committed to fiscal responsibility and also making sure that we acknowledge and recognize the great work that's being done by our staff. So thank you. And I'm supportive of this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments by Board members? Supervisor Fowler. Supervisor Begay. Supervisor Fowler.
Let her wake up first. Yes, thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate this coming to us now. And because, you know, every year, we're not sure how we're going to do our budget. It depends on how much has, how much we have in our budget. And there's so much this year, especially this year through our budget process. We kept talking about the uncertainty. We didn't know where we're going to end up. And we didn't know where, how, how we were going to move forward. And then the impacts from the federal agencies, we kept talking about the uncertainty. And then just the economy, how that was going to pan out. So I'm really, I'm really pleased that we have determined and we've, the staff have really analyzed our budget to say, yes, we can in fact do this. We can, we can carry on as we told our staff that we would do this in January. So I'm really pleased with this action because they need our assistance. They're the ones that carry out the work. They're the ones that are out there every single day carrying the work of the public servant that they are. And I'm really pleased that we're at this point now. So I wholeheartedly support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Begay.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve item number four as presented.
Before we do, I had a question. I was just waiting for everybody else to make their comment.
No, I haven't made a comment. I was just wait. Thanks.
I can't hear you, Tammy. I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you, Chair. It was because I didn't have my microphone turned on. I think it's important to say that we talked about this at budget season. We indicated that we would come back at this time. We've done it in the order and manner that we said that we would. And so because of that, I'm also supportive after review and finding that the funds were available.
Thank you. And I concur. I'm supportive of this. My question was just a reminder of what is it, what's the increase individually and then what's the total cost to the county? And obviously, as already been mentioned, this money was already put aside. So it's not like we're pulling it from somewhere else. But just for the record's sake, what those numbers are would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So in terms of what is the, what is the adjustment? We are, as I said, moving the grades and the employees in those grades. And it's really a two-pronged approach. So for employees in our grade structure that are in grade 13 and below, the employees will receive a $1.50 per hour increase up to their grade maximum amount. So no one can go over the new maximum of the grades. The minimums and the maximums are both moving. And the grade entry will also increase $1.50 an hour. And don't, with me, I don't have the exact new entry. But right now, our, we, our grade that is entry level starts at $19 an hour. And so the grades are moving $1.50 an hour. But there are very few people in grade seven, which is our foundational grade. And so the people in grade seven will be moving to grade eight. And then those grades will be moving up. So it will end up being closer to $21 an hour will be our new, our new foundational grade entry. And then in grades 14 and above, employees will receive a 3.5% increase, again, up to their adjusted grade maximum amount. And so if there are also, if there are any cases, particularly in grade 14, where $1.50 per hour is greater than the 3.5%, the employees will receive the greater of the two pay increases. So that people right in between those two prongs will get the more generous so that no one misses out because of the grade they're in. The staff, both Finance and HR, went through and looked individually, person by person, to evaluate any compression that was created. And this plan really maximized our ability to use the money that was set aside. Any eligible regular employee hired prior to December 20th, 2025, will receive this increase. Temporary employees will not receive the increases. And also, we have a couple of positions, including the law enforcement pay plan and the detention pay plan, where they received their full amount at the beginning of the fiscal year. This is kind of a divided. And so the detention pay plan and the law enforcement pay plan are not being adjusted further. They receive their full, their full increment at the beginning of the fiscal. So there are some specifics there, but very excited about how that impacts. As we've discussed many times in compensation in the past, a flat amount is more generous for the lower half of our compensation structure. Well, a percentage is more generous to the upper half. And so by using the flat amount for grades 13 and below, those employees are receiving much more than 3.5%. In fact, the employees in grade seven are getting a 6.9% increase. And the employees in grade eight are receiving a 6.7% increase. So very, very excited about the effectiveness of this two-tiered approach to honor frontline staff and also honor the specialists, generalists, supervisors, and managers who are so critical to our success. As far as your second half of your question, Vice Chair, I actually don't have the exact number with me. The Finance Department is running that because of vacancies, actually. And so when we're looking at what, it changes week to week. So even when we discussed it at the retreat, So even when we discussed it at the retreat, there's turnover, there are new people starting, there are people who are leaving, and so they're running in more recent, and I'll get that number to all of you as soon as I have it.
Great, thank you. And, and like I said, the money's already been appropriated, so it's not like we're pulling it from somewhere else, but it would be nice to know what that number is to see the overall impact to our county payroll.
Absolutely. And we're running it department by department, so we'll be able to share those figures as well.
Great, thank you. And now Supervisor, Supervisor Horstman?
Yes, I just real briefly, I just wanna note, and thank you, Erica, for that. I know we talked about that much more specifically during our retreat as well. But I just wanna point out that this blended plan, this isn't the first time we have done this. In fact, the county and the Board of Supervisors have supported similar blended plan for compensation in the past, which of course is in order to bring the, those on the lower part of the salary schedule up and quite frankly, still recognize the great work and those who have been part of the Coquigny County family for a lot of years. So I really appreciate thinking outside the box. I really think the creativity that went into this and think it is appropriate and fair across the board. So thank you for the information, Erica.
Thank you. All right, now Supervisor Begay.
I made a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ontiveros and a second by Supervisor Horstman. All those in favor, please indicate by, oh, sorry, I went too far. Okay, so a motion by Supervisor Begay and a second by Supervisor Horstman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we will resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors may have a motion to resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. There is a motion by Supervisor Begay. Is there a second? Second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item number seven, Flood Control District Consent Agenda. Consideration and possible action to approve a lease agreement between Coquigny County Flood Control District and Mountain Lion for temporary office space utilization at Mountain Lion's Casper location, three seven seven three Casper Drive, Flex F, Arizona, for a period of twenty-four months through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, with a total cost of forty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars for the twenty-four month period. Are there any questions or comments, or would anybody like to pull the motion?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to pull this item for discussion, please.
Thank you. With that, we'll hand it over to the management.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. And this one, I believe, Lucinda Andriani, our Flood Control Administrator is on the call as well, as well as Heather Domlin, our Chief Executive Officer for our Mountain Lion group. And with this item, it is for a lease agreement, twenty-four month period, just over forty-two thousand in lease for the twenty-four months. As you know, we are working on a joint operations center with flood control and emergency management at our Public Works facility. That is going to take some time to develop. Flood control offices are currently at Public Works. They're in a modular facility, and the accommodations are, we've made it work, just like we make so many things work in Coquignino County, but not the most ideal, particularly during this transition. We have a partner agency that has new office spaces that are downtown connection center, and they have some office space vacancy. With that vacancy, there's some work being done at our Mountain Lion facility to better accommodate for our service needs with our Mountain Lion operation, expansion of mechanical space, garage space, et cetera. And so we found in working with our partner agencies that this is a good two-year option for our Flood Control District to locate at this facility during this time as we transition to build a more permanent facility. The forty-two thousand is in our Flood Control District budget. It can be utilized. And so financially, it's, we're sound with this lease agreement for flood control. And with that, I would turn to either Lucinda Andriani or Heather Domlin if they have any questions or input on this item. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Before we pass it on to them, are there any questions from board members? Supervisor Ontiveros?
Thank you, Chair. And it's, it's really amazing to me that I have been a supervisor now for nearly a year, and I'm still learning. And this has been part, when I began reviewing this, this really is a part of my learning curve, if you will. And I guess County Manager Bertelson, this question would be for you, that when a department head or an administrator moves to relocate, what are the steps, the process of that, the steps in the process of that move?
Working with our Facilities Department, our Finance Department, is it financially feasible? Is it a good location from a facilities perspective? IT connectivity, for example, any connectivity issues that we may have in moving to a different location that is outside of, so to speak, a county facility? So really, all of those considerations in those discussions.
Okay, so let's say, I see several department heads in the room today, and I, it was more of a step-by-step process. So let's say that one of them is cramped for space and they want to have some new room. What is the first step that they do? Who do they contact? And perhaps my reason for asking this question is, is that I am a Flood Control District Director, and I had just heard randomly that the Flood Control District was moving to a new location. And it, I thought, okay, it kinda caught me off guard, but I thought, as a Flood Control District Director, maybe I should have known about this. And that's really where I'm coming from. So take it from there.
Yeah, Supervisor Ontiveros, that's fair. And in the communication process, I probably didn't do a good job in communicating with the Flood Control District Board of Directors in these conversations. So, but, but where it would start would be with the department head and then working with facilities and then facilities coordinating, whether it's IT or any other spatial needs that we may have. So with that, yeah, the, this, now we're at this place where we're getting it on the agenda in a bit more of an urgent manner, and so probably doesn't need, you know, I should have done a better job in communicating that.
So let me, let me go back a little bit further. So the, when did the Flood Control District Administrator, I'm assuming the first step in this process would be to contact County Management? Is that correct?
Yeah, probably.
Well, probably, or no?
In this case.
I can respond, Andy. Yeah, I can respond. So, yeah, and I, I too take responsibility for, you know, not necessarily communicating. We've had this discussion on and off for at least six months, that the situation that we're in is not conducive to productivity. We have Jay and Joe sharing a space that's about eight by eight feet, and as you're aware, Jay, Chris, Jay Smith works extensively with the timber and lumber industries, and there are a lot of sensitive conversations that go on, and it's just not conducive. They're both on a number of virtual meetings, and we have other issues. I have not been able to fill the district engineer position as a result of the lack of space. The space we have for the community relations manager is inappropriate, again, for that space, and a number of sensitive communications go on many times with people in the community. And so we've been looking, you know, considering it for some time. I think now, about three months ago, I reached out to Tom Hanecheck. Frankly, there was a, an office that was vacant out in the Public Works, not in Public Works, but in that area out east of the, that side of the mall there. And, and we happened to see the real estate agent there one day. We popped in and said, you know, what's happening? It was not an appropriate facility, but it was interesting because we had a conversation with Rob Girlick at that time, who's a, you know, key commercial real estate broker here in town, and got a sense about what the costs were and frankly, realized that it was gonna be very challenging to find anything. And so then when we considered, you know, okay, gee, do we reach out, let's reach out to some of the other governmental entities and see, and it happened to be the time when Mountain Lion was moving downtown and went down for their grand opening, which wonderful building, really, really proud of what they've accomplished there. And so in talking with Heather, they had some vacant space at Casper as a result of moving downtown. They too have a plan to move into a new, modify that facility to better meet their needs over the long term in about two years. I believe they still need to secure a grant to do that. They're doing some work now, and then I want to do more work in about, in about two years, which is about the same timing for the building. And so we said, okay, here's a good opportunity, temporary need that we have, temporary need that they have, and they do have to charge us rent. That's part of their Department of Transportation grant, but they're being reasonable with that. It's a very, very, very reasonable approach with us that they're taking relative to providing the office space and, and associated facilities, access to a conference room that we do use pretty frequently. So, so it's a real win-win, I think, for both organizations and an opportunity for us to staff, staff our organization the way that it's been approved, frankly, for now. I think we've had a district engineer for three years and have not been able, we've been interim filling that with outside consulting resources and can now fill that with a plan to go ahead and fill that position and fill the community relations position as well so that we have a space that's appropriate for them to be on the phone, for example, with the media and things like that. So, so that, that was the genesis, but worked hand-in-hand when we started down this path. I called Tom Hanecheck and said, Tom, what, what do you, if there, at first I asked, is there any space within the county? Is there any space? And he said, no, they're really, everybody's tight on space. They're tied on space at Public Works. Everybody's tied on space everywhere. And so that's when we started thinking about, okay, maybe a different, another public agency may have some space, and happens that they do have some temporary space. So working with facilities and working with IT, fortunately, the cost to move into this facility is, is very low cost. And any investments that we're making, like in the Biz Hub, we're gonna move, we would have had to invest in the, we'd already committed to investing in the Biz Hub for the new building, so that will move over to the new building and provide that service there. So, so it's worked out really well, really a win-win.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Andriani. When you, at the beginning, you said that about six months ago, we started discussing this. Who is we?
The, our team, our Flood Control District team. Primarily Jay and I and Sean started looking at, okay, what are we gonna do to deal with the, you know, situation that we have here? And so.
Okay, and so when did you contact, because I understand it sounded like the next step was to contact our Facilities Director, Tom Hanecheck? Was that the second step?
Yeah, really that.
Okay, so at what point was County Management?
When we saw the, you know, we saw this private area, you know, then I reached out to him and said, hey, you know, what, what is happening in the market and what, what are some other opportunities that we had? And we had been talking just internally about, gosh, what are our options and thinking about some of the other, you know, agencies that may have facilities.
Okay, and I, and I understand that. At what point did you contact County Management on this move?
I've updated Andy as we've moved through this process, you know, so.
Okay, okay. And really, when I was going back, I did tell you what my concern was, which that as a director, I didn't know anything about it really until right now, truth be known.
I sent out an email last week, so.
Okay, well, agreed, until it came out for this meeting, I, as a Flood Control District Director, really knew nothing about it. And I do think that as we move forward, when we have departments that are going to be moving, I think that it would be important to have this as a discussion item for the board so that we are aware of what is going on and we don't kinda hear about it secondhand. The, I know that if we do add up the total cost for this, it's actually, we've been talking about forty-two thousand, but it's really sixty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-four. Am I correct with that, County Manager Bertelson, or am I not understanding this?
I believe so. Lucinda, if you could address that.
Yeah, it's with the, with the Biz Hub, the, the copy machine, that's, there's a cost there, but again, that cost, we're gonna incur that cost relatively soon to be able to operate the new facility, so.
Okay.
Yeah, Supervisor Ontiveros or Director Ontiveros, some of those costs like Biz Hub, that's an opportunity for us to purchase, make that purchase, and then utilize it when we are able to hopefully build the facility that we'll be in more permanently.
Okay, and I do understand that, and I actually asked the question just for transparency so everyone would know what is going on. And I will say that, Ms. Andriani, you were right when you said that so many people are at capacity in our, in our facilities. Some of what you described actually is what is going on on the second floor of the administration building. Our district directors are in cubicles, not even offices. The privacy regarding phone calls and et cetera, those all do exist countywide. So I just wanna say that I do fully understand the need for this, and I'm just gonna restate for the record that when we have county offices that are going to be moving, I think it is important that the directors and the board are kept in the loop so that we do know what is going on and not are caught off guard by just a random comment from someone. So I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna leave it there.
Supervisor Fowler?
Yes, thank you. I too did not know about this. I'm wondering if the Chair and the Vice were, Vice Chair were apprised of this, this move before, before this, it came before the board. We are, there are many, many departments that are really neat, a better facility. We talked about one last, during our last meeting, which is the Page Adult Probation. And here we're, we, we have a facility that's gonna be built in two years. This is with congressional funding that, that was approved. I wanna make sure that we know that it has actually been deposited and that it will be used to build this, the building that we had requested for. And when, I'd like to find out when the construction will be, and we'll start for one, but back to this process of buildings, renting buildings, and I'm just at loss as, as my colleague, and I just asked the Chair, and we all learned about it last week in an email. And we have Flood District and our calendar and our meetings, every board meeting. And we have our meetings with our County Manager, has not been brought up to in our meetings. We have our meetings, just even just a chat in the hallway, and it has never been brought up. So I'm just as surprised as everyone else is here with this, this request that is before the board. this, this request that is before the board. So this is like, get it done, ask, ask questions later. That's the approach that is being taken here. So I just, I'm just really surprised. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Horseman.
Yes, since a question, uh, Supervisor Fowler that you asked, and just to make it clear, I, I, I think I learned with everybody else. Um, I did get an email on November 19th, um, uh, that was informing me this would be on the consent agenda and the information with great detail, um, that did come from Lucinda. And I did respond, uh, to the, um, a county manager just indicating that wanted to make sure he was on top of it. I know some of these things are more administrative in nature. So I just wanted to make sure that our county manager was on top of it. I think any of us who've been out to public works, anybody who's been out to the flood control district office understands that they are in a modular building. That's really a trailer, uh, out there and it's not the best of circumstances. And we also know there are a lot of other departments that are in, uh, areas that are really not in the best of circumstances. And I know that we are all looking forward to, uh, the EOC being built out there and other, uh, buildings going on as part of the, um, uh, uh, building process for EOC and, and public works. And I know that flood control district's going to get to, get to be able to move in there. When I got the email, my assumption was that there's, this was an unusual opportunity that was coming up, um, that, uh, would help in this transition and help in a situation where at least one of our departments, and there are others, that is definitely overcrowded and do not have very good, uh, working, um, uh, facilities, that this was an, an extraordinary opportunity that had been, uh, that, that arose and is my assumption. And that's why I, I sent it back to our county manager, knowing that county management is really in the best position to really, um, take a look at this and weigh and balance it with our directors and weigh and balance it with all the other needs of the district. So, uh, but to answer your question, Supervisor Fowler, I found out with everybody else on that email.
Supervisor Antiveros.
Um, thank you for that. I appreciate this discussion very much because at our retreat, um, Supervisor Fowler brings up a very good point because the description that this board was given about what is going on at the Page Juvenile Probation Department, to me, sounded much worse in the conditions than what the flood control district has described as their conditions. And I will say, now I have, I have not been there, so I'm just talking about what I verbally heard as the description. And Supervisor Fowler brings up a very good point that there was light at the end of the tunnel for the flood control district. They knew help was coming when this new administration building was going to be built. There's no light at the end of the tunnel for some of these other departments that are in very serious condition unless, I'm not aware of it. Um, so I think she's also very accurate, Supervisor Fowler is also very accurate when she said, let's just get it done and then we'll let everyone know and ask if it's okay. And that does not sit well with me as either a director or a supervisor. I feel that what has happened here has been very much out of order. And, um, you know, we, it, the need is there. I know the money is there. I feel like I'm in a very difficult position because I want to approve it, but I'm not happy about the order of it. So I think that I've made my very, my point very clear for the record. And going forward, I'm, I'm not happy about this, but I'm going to be much less happy if something like this happens again.
Thank you. Any other supervisor comments? Supervisor Bagay.
Yeah. I, 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 I feel that, um, we have staff that you meet, we have staff that, um, are supposed to be doing the job and are doing the job and looking at, um, from a business point that I, like I said, I've been with administration for years, years, years and years. And they're, they're the ones that should be bringing, they are the ones that meet on it. They're the ones that know about it and they're the ones that bring it to the board. And there's a fine line between the board and the administration only because they're, they're hired to do their jobs and they're supposed, they, they are presenting things to us and we're just here to listen to it and then to make it, um, an approval, disapproval, however, we, we, we want to, um, vote. And, you know, I, I just feel that, you know, we're, it, yeah, you may be disappointed with it, but you know, we need to let them do their work. And I just want to say that it's, it's, I, I agree with some of the comments that are being made and I, I don't, I disagree with some of the other comments that are being made. The staff, I think, wasn't the right to look for a location and start looking around to see because they're, and they're the ones that are going to be needing the, the, the extra space and stuff like that. But I think, you know, for me, that's, that's how I feel. And, um, and certainly, you know, um, I think Andy, you probably need to, um, let your administration know, um, that, you know, we, I need to be involved or you make, you are involved and, you know, then go from there. And so, and that's why we have a board chair and a vice chair is to be meeting with them, with the, with the administration. And, and, you know, that's, that's, that's the way, um, I see the whole thing. But, um, nonetheless, we do need space. It's been coming for a long time and we need to, you know, um, I'm hoping that the board would look at it that way and just approve it and, and then have Andy take the ring and, um, Erica and, you know, go from there. I mean, there's always something that we need to, uh, do and there's always something that we have to kind of, uh, move along. And this is probably something that we need to do. And certainly, you know, there are other areas that were, were said, were said, like in Page that needs to get done. Let's work on it as administration and then bring that to the board and keep the board, uh, board of, um, the board chair and the vice chair informed. And that's what they're there for. So I just want to say thank you so much for, um, this comment that I'm making, but I think we need to let everyone do their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you respond, let's, uh, let Supervisor Horseman, and I'll make my comments and then we'll let you respond. Supervisor Horseman.
Yeah, thank you. And, and I want to make clear that, um, Supervisor Bagay, I agree with you. Everybody needs to do their job. And to a certain degree, um, to be honest with you, I am not looking at spaces or leases, but I am looking at our county management to make sure they in fact are. Um, and I agree, I don't have any problem with, um, uh, any department had, you know, trying to take a look at options, whether it be through our facility management or elsewhere. And then quite frankly, it's up to the county manager and county management to really assess the needs and assess the budget and assess the opportunities and, and make recommendations to us. Um, I'd love to have had more of a discussion than the email, to be honest with you, just because that's me and I'd like to know what's going on. Um, on the other hand, I do, uh, rely on and look to our county management, uh, to make a lot of these types of assessments and make these types of recommendations because I do think it's their job. So, thank you.
Supervisor Antiveros.
Um, thank you, Chair Horseman. And I'm just going to tell everyone, I'm going to be voting to approve this. And I do not want to be micromanaging our county manager department. So I just want to make that, that very clear. I just believe that what happened in this case was, was out of order and could have been handled in a much more orderly fashion and look forward to future moves being handled in a more orderly fashion. And I will also say that this conversation has really brought up the larger conversation that this board has looked at and will continue to look at, and that is the facilities master plan. I think that what the discussion that we've had and I appreciate, I honestly appreciate this honest, robust conversation that the Board of Supervisors has had this morning. Um, and it underscores the need for the overall facilities because we're doing a lot of band-aiding here and it's, it, it comes at an expense. So I'm glad that the overall facilities management conversation has been brought to the forefront and really the importance of moving forward on that in a more robust way.
Thank you. And I'd like to make my comments now. Um, I, um, with this, with this, uh, move, I see it as a great opportunity to go into a space that's available. And we've always talked about this organization being nimble and being able to make adjustments when those opportunities come. So I appreciate that. But being vice chair and being the, the, uh, board chair of Mountain Lion right now, the fact that I found out about this a week ago was too late. We needed to know sooner. And that's what I'm hearing from my colleagues is that we just want to be kept in the loop. We're not trying to tell you how to do your job. We're not telling, we just want to know sooner so that it's not coming up with short notice. And in my five years here, there have been some times where we've had short notice and that's when you get this kind of reaction. So all we're asking is that we're informed with plenty of time so that we know what's happening so we can be prepared and make a good decision. Cause at the end of the day, we want to support our flood control district. We want to take care of those space issues. We want to be with our partner, Mountain Lion and utilize a space that's available and is there and can be used quickly. And so, uh, while I appreciate county management trying to be nimble and trying to make this happen quickly, we would just like to know sooner so that way it doesn't feel like we're rushed or brought in a decision to made that we weren't quite aware of to that degree. And so again, like I said, from my end, I just ask that we know sooner that we have this conversation and this communication, uh, better because there have been some moments where that lack of communication puts where we start asking questions that, uh, maybe are unnecessary. But I too appreciate this robust conversation and I appreciate the work that everybody on the team has done to get this here. I think this is a good opportunity for the flood control district and a good opportunity for Mountain Lion. So I'd like to see it happen. Again, I just would appreciate to know sooner. With that, Supervisor Fowler.
Yeah, just want to, uh, comment again and just want to state that, you know, we, um, I, it's just that, you know, when, we have faith in our county manager and making those decisions, but just, just a little heads up is really important. We just, um, so by, by email, yes, we've all received that all at the same time. So I just want to, um, I think these kinds of creative opportunities is always important to take advantage of. Um, so thank you. I'm going to be supporting it.
Supervisor Bagay.
Thank you. Uh, before I make a motion, I'd like to say that, you know, uh, we, we are all here for one reason is for Coconino County and we just need to, um, you know, really be respectful and then also to, um, make sure that, you know, we're all working together the way we should be and talking to one another. So, you know, we don't, uh, things don't fall, um, to a wayside. But so there, therefore I'd like to make a motion that we approve number, um, number seven.
Yes, thank you. Do I have a, a second? Supervisor Horseman, a second? Or did you have another comment? You're muted.
Supervisor Horseman. I will second that motion since a motion has been made. But before we vote, I would ask to hear from our county manager what his recommendation is.
County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. A, a couple of things. One, I really appreciate the conversation and the feedback. And, uh, if, if this is the item that it, that it takes to have a robust discussion, then good. Uh, a couple of things, we just talked about our management team this morning. A few things have surfaced with this discussion on, uh, communication and board and keeping informed, right, Erica? And so we talked about that and how we could do a better job with that. Uh, also what surfaced, Supervisor Antiveros or Director Antiveros, as you had noted, the, uh, the spatial needs and the facilities master plan. And we're going to be having a conversation on December 9th with our facilities director. So a couple of things, there's a broader facilities master plan and how we're trying to accomplish delivery of that plan, uh, financially and otherwise, logistically. But then, and we, we actually heard this, our operational needs. And so when we talk about building security and retrofitting, we have those needs as well, as well as our spatial needs and the facilities that we currently have, that we're currently operating in, and how we're addressing, uh, those needs operationally and from a spatial perspective. One thing that really comes to light for me is not everything has to be operated, um, uh, it doesn't need to be, uh, within an emergency or an urgent manner. And there are times when sometimes we need to take a little more thought and care and, and, uh, not get ahead of ourselves. And in this case, uh, we got ahead of ourselves and I'll, I'll own that in terms of, of moving forward. We have this opportunity. We need to move quickly with, um, am I having the appropriate conversations with everyone involved, particularly our Board of Directors in this case. So I, I really appreciate the feedback. I, um, uh, and we'll, we'll own that and, um, make sure that we're, we're, we're hearing the conversation and that we're managing forward, uh, with you in the best way possible. Because I know there are a few cases where, uh, we tend to operate in this urgent manner at times as staff. And in doing so, we're not, uh, we're not filling those communication gaps that happen. So if this is the item that's, uh, uh, helping with that conversation, then I'm thankful for it. So thank you.
And I would just like to say that I, I completely agree with Supervisor Bagay's comments that we are here for Coconino County as a whole. I very much appreciate that and very much enjoy working with my supervisors. And I will just tell county management that yeah, perhaps there was a out of order-ness here, but my faith is still rock solid in all of you. Please know that.
This is a very healthy discussion. I appreciate it. And to answer, um, uh, Chair Horseman's question, do we support this? And, and I would recommend approval. I'm not, um, uh, I'm not completely satisfied with our level of play in this and my part in that. That said, I still recommend this item and I thank Heather for being here as well as a partner.
Supervisor Fowler.
Yes, I, I, um, what is going, um, going to happen to the current space that they're in right now?
We'll be able to utilize that with Public Works. And then while we have, um, so we have an engineering group that's, um, become robust. And so my hope is that we'll be able to utilize that facility. I have to admit, I'm part of the Public Works Administration that, uh, created those facilities and they were to be temporary at the time, quite frankly, and they've become a bit more permanent. Not necessarily proud about that, but I, uh, the financial necessity, et cetera, has sort of created that dynamic. And as Chair Horseman had noted, we call them modular facilities. They're, they're, they're trailers, very thin-walled, et cetera. So our engineering group will be able to utilize that. And my hope is we'll also be able to utilize that in our transition to a more permanent facility with emergency management and the flood control district. So.
I have a follow-up question on that. With, with those temper, the portables or whatnot.
Yeah.
Once the new EOC's built, that new building's built, are those portables going to go away? Are the, are we keeping those?
Chair Vasquez, I wish I could say yes. I think we're still going to need that space. I really do. And again, not proud of, uh, that space, but we made it work at the time and it, we're still making it work. And it's part of our larger facilities discussion, no question about it.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. And so with that, we have a motion on, on the floor by Supervisor Bagay and a second by Supervisor Horseman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for, for a good discussion. It's really important that we have these discussions as we're making these decisions that impact so many people and, and are part of our job as supervisors, making sure that we make these decisions with all the information needed to do so. With that, we need a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors.
So move.
We have a motion by Supervisor Antiveros. Can I have a second? We have a second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Now may have a motion to resolve as the Public Health Services District Board of Directors. We have a motion by second, by Supervisor Bagay and a second by Supervisor Horseman? We have a motion by second, by Supervisor Begay and a second by Supervisor Horseman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you. Now, we are looking at the Health District Consent Agenda: Consideration and Possible Action to Approve a Contract for the Spirit Playscape Project Grant Between John Hopkins University and Coconino County Public Health Service District between September 5th, 2025 through March 31st, 2027, and Approve a Fiscal Year 2026 Budget Adjustment for $65,000. Does anybody want to pull this item? Okay, in that case, may I have a motion to approve Health District Item Number Eight?
So move.
We have a motion by Supervisor, or by Director Ontiveros. May I have a second? Second by Director Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now may I have a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors?
So move.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ontiveros, a second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, can I have a motion to resolve as the Library District Board?
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Begay and a second by Supervisor Ontiveros. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion passes unanimously. Now we're ready to, for the presentation to share with the board the impressions and connections formed during the recent tour of the branch and affiliate library locations that make up the Coconino Library District. The item will be co-presented by Coconino County and City of Flagstaff staff. And with that, I'll hand it over to our Strategic Initiatives Director, James Orlosky.
Well, good morning, members of the library board. Very excited to be here with you this morning. Erica and I had the good fortune, I, I wear a lot of hats honestly for the county, but one of my roles is to serve as one of the two library liaisons, along with Deputy County Manager Phil Pot. And we had the good fortune earlier this fall of getting to go around the entire county and really take a tour of all the county library facilities from right here in Flagstaff to Page and Fredonia and Forest Lakes and, and all of our other great county libraries. And so there was some interest from supervisors that we come and share with you, the experience that we had, the knowledge that we gained and the connections that we made. And so that's the intent of today's presentation. Director Tilson from Flagstaff Public Library is here as well. And so between the three of us, we'll all kind of co-present this item this morning. And I want to start by just visually sharing with you kind of what the library district, district looks like, dive a little bit more in the next slides of the kind of unique structure. We obviously went through a consultant process and gained some impressions, but one of the things that we learned is that it is a very unique partnership and model that we have. But these are all of the affiliates and branches that make up our county library district. Very important, it is a partnership between us and the City of Flagstaff. I'm going to go back a little bit in time. In 1977 is actually when the Free County Library District was formed. So there's a lot of history of our district and the libraries in it. There's a secondary tax levy that provides the funding that supports the libraries that make up the district. And again, it's a partnership with the City of Flagstaff through an IGA. There are three types of libraries that receive funding support through the library district. So there's affiliate libraries. These are library facilities that are located in an incorporated city or town. And so they receive funding support, but they have a city or town again that supports their staffing, their facilities and provide operations and maintenance. So Fredonia, Page, Sedona and Williams are all examples of our affiliate libraries. Additionally, we have what we call branch libraries under IGA. So those are located in Flagstaff or in unincorporated areas so they don't have a city or town that provides for their staffing. Instead, the City of Flagstaff does through our partnership. And so they're responsible for staffing and library operations. So the main branch and East Flagstaff Branch obviously are examples of this, as well as the detention facility, Forest Lakes, Grand Canyon and Tuba City. We also have a couple of others. They don't fit neatly into either of the other two categories. And so the county law library is one of those, as well as have a supi that actually doesn't have a physical location. Instead, the funding support that they receive provides assistance with literary support for the village. At this point, I'd like to bring up Director Tilson. It is again, a very unique partnership. There's a lot of players that are involved in this partnership. And so I think she'd like to kind of walk through how that all works, who the key people are and the flow of communications. So Director Tilson, if you would.
Good morning, supervisors, chair and, and vice chair. I know I was already introduced, but I'll go ahead and say Linda Tilson, the Director of the Library District. And thanks for turning it over to me to, to just give some brief words on the communication piece of this. I do want to mention on the last slide, somehow we missed one of our branches, which is the Bookmobile. So I don't know how all three of us missed that. We all reviewed this, but I don't want to leave that out. Then just moving on to the communication, some of you may remember that we recently came up with a graphic just to, can you hear me okay? Okay. Just to describe the library district and what it looks like because there hadn't been a visual before. But what we hadn't done was talked about communication. And so we came up with another graphic. I guess we're big on graphics now. I don't know, maybe we have shorter attention spans because of TikTok or something, but. Anyway, so we came up with this graphic, which I think is a really nice one to have. It makes it kind of clear what the different parts of the organization are and ideally the direction of communication and how that should work. I think it also nicely includes the names of some of the people who are responsible for that communication. And I do want to point out that we have our deputy county manager here, Damaris, who is also listed on the, the graphic that you see. The other thing I wanted to say in regard to communication is that when we did the study with the consultant, this is one of the areas where we really wanted to see improvement was in communication between the city and the county regarding the libraries. And I just want to say that I am so impressed by, let me get your title right, Deputy County Manager Phil Pot and, and the Director's Strategic Initiatives, James, for, for really undertaking this mission to go around and visit the libraries. So when we have conversations now, they are completely clear on what we're talking about. They can picture the Fredonia Library, they can picture the Forest Lakes Library, they know who works there. And so when we're having our conversations now, that is extremely helpful and is really, I think, increased the understanding of the, the library district setup and this relationship between the City of Flagstaff and the board and other staff involved. I won't read you the graphic because that's kind of the whole point in having a graphic so I don't have to tell you the direction of the communication, but I would be happy to answer any questions anyone might have on that. I think it's back, back to James.
So now, now's the fun part. We get to actually talk about the tour that we went on and all the wonderful people that we met, our librarians and their facilities. And so certainly we'd be remiss if we didn't start off by talking about the Bookmobile. For me, it was one of the coolest stops on the whole journey and there were a lot of cool moments on, on that journey. We got to meet Becca, who is the Bookmobile Librarian, and she talked about some of the challenges with the current Bookmobile that I think you all are very intimately aware of based on the past discussions and the approval of the procurement of the new Bookmobile. But just for the benefit of the public, the Bookmobile is a mobile library. It travels throughout the county and it really reaches people where they are. So our folks that may not have close proximity and access to either a branch or affiliate library, the Bookmobile is taking services to them throughout the county. It offers not just books, which is obviously important, but also other services so they can print documents, they can provide notary services, again, really reaching people in rural and remote areas around the county. And as well, something that I learned in talking to Becca is that she also provides services around Flagstaff, again, for families that may not live close to or have easy access to one of the branch libraries here in the City of Flagstaff. They're really all over the county. I could probably spend a couple of minutes talking about all the different locations that they visit. But if you are interested, you can also just scan the QR code and they do a really good job of putting out a schedule so that families know in advance where they're going to be. And so we wanted to share that with you as well. It's, it's really a wonderful service and we're so excited that the new Bookmobile is going to be under development and be, going to be coming online in the future. You know, again, another one in my naivete, a library that I didn't know existed, but our correctional facility library, Martha Villalobos and Andrea Barantes, the librarians there. Martha, I believe, has just recently celebrated 35 years of service with the city and, and working at the correctional facility library. So what a tremendous career in service that she's been providing, but really providing access to literacy and books and education for incarcerated individuals. They have the opportunity every week that the librarians come to them and they can check out materials, periodicals, magazines are very popular, is what Andrea was telling us, but they have all different books in their collection. They have a specific budget dedicated to the correctional facility. So it's not like they're getting secondhand materials, they're getting materials that they order specifically based on the need of that population and incarcerated individuals can also request specific books as well. Again, items are available in multiple languages, meeting people where they are. And it was cool, while we, Erica and I were there that day, there was actually a librarian from the City of Flagstaff that was helping them. As you can imagine, with a facility like that, cataloging is a big need. And so it's a cool part of the partnership that Flagstaff librarians come over and, and help with the needs that they have there with cataloging. And then the county law library, I was so impressed, and I know Erica was too, by just the caliber of the county law library that we have. It's really phenomenal. So Gretchen has a long tenure with the law library there, very cutting edge, leading edge with a variety of free services that they offer, a lot of helpful self-service forms, again, multiple languages, providing resources for basic court filings, things like visitation and, and just a whole different type of services. They also offer the, the ability for people to get a free legal consultation with either an attorney or a legal representative. And then all of the law librarians in the network make themselves available for live chats, again, providing services and answering kind of frequently answered questions. You know, it was interesting, when we were talking to Gretchen, she was describing how visitors that are visiting the law library, you know, their patron base is usually going through a stressful legal situation. And so aside from sort of the normal librarian skills, you know, I thought that was an interesting point, is the skills of diffusing situations, again, meeting people where they are and, and dealing with people that are going through, you know, any number of different stressful legal scenarios and emotions can be high. I mentioned it earlier, but they are part of a network that's helping to address legal deserts in rural areas. And so Gretchen was able to show very precise information about how the population used to be served and how it's gotten better in recent times, but there still are areas around the county and frankly, around the state where people don't have access to law libraries and court services. And so again, she's on the cutting edge of working with her fellow law librarians and addressing those legal deserts in, in rural areas, to the point that she's been recognized, just one award or one feather in her cap, is she was the 2025 Foundation for Justice Award recipient. So very cool. Gretchen does a ton of tremendous work for the county at, at our law library. Sedona Library, I think architecturally was probably the, the best stop on the tour. Really phenomenal library there in, in the city of Sedona. Again, you know, all of these libraries in the network are very unique. So some of the uniqueness of Sedona is that they do operate as a nonprofit. So Judy Poe, the Director of the Sedona Law Library, or Sedona Library, has a staff of 22. She has her own HR Director. They actually contract out for IT services. So you'll hear a little bit more about IT services and the service that City of Flagstaff provides for the county law libraries, but they do have their own contract through Executech. And then she was describing how they're in this kind of perpetual cycle of, of entering into contracts with the city of Sedona. And so no sooner do they execute one contract and a couple of years later, they're already starting the process of negotiating that next contract with the city of Sedona. Interesting also because they do receive funding obviously from us, the Coconino County Library District, but they also receive funding from Yavapai County. And so it's kind of this patchwork, right, of funding sources? That's one of her challenges. They are in the process currently of undertaking a capital campaign. So she was describing how people just assume it's the city of Sedona, it's this beautiful architectural library. And so people just tend to assume that that's not a need that they have, when that really couldn't be further from the truth. You know, one of my takeaways is they do a really great job of working with the space that they have, but they definitely do also have facility challenges, the building itself, the art pieces that need to be maintained. And so one of the big things that they're working on right now is a, a capital campaign for their building, which is now 30 years old. Just in the last couple of weeks, they had their annual fundraiser called Get Loud, which I think Erica and I both appreciated hearing about that event. I'm sorry I missed it, it was a couple of weekends ago, but it's a big annual fundraiser, but Get Loud for our library, we thought that was kind of humorous. And then the East Flagstaff Community Library is the last stop on the tour that I'll be sharing with you, but just a wonderful amenity and facility for the East Flagstaff community. So obviously a partnership there with the Coconino Community College District. So we were hearing about some of the challenges and ways that they work together on maintenance and other aspects of that partnership. Very crowded space. That was one of the things that Caitlin, the librarian at the East Branch was pointing out, is despite all the waiting that they do, there's just so many materials that are in circulation, but they're in demand and so they're, they're meeting that need. There's also a great partnership that they have with Flagstaff PD. They do deal with some negative behavioral scenarios and so they actually have a constant presence from Flagstaff PD there to help with that. And then obviously, a lot of discussion around the bond that voters recently approved and what that's going to mean for the, the, the library there. In the short term, I know, I don't want to speak for Director Tilson, but I know the City of Flagstaff is having very active internal discussions about what that looks like in the short term while the construction process is underway. And again, ton of wonderful programming that they do that you can scan the QR code and see. With that, I think I'll turn it over to Erica and she'll keep going with our tour with the Flagstaff Downtown Library Branch.
Thanks, James. And I just want to take a minute and, and thank Heidi Hansen for being here, Mark from City IT who provides IT support for nearly all of the libraries except for Sedona. Ademarius is here, who is, as Linda said, is the deputy librarian for the library district. And Amelia, who keeps everybody organized in all things library, including me and of course Linda. And, and really one of the things that we saw as we went to all of these libraries, great people really creating community. And so interesting how innovative they are, how they're adapting to the needs of the people in those communities and, and the hard work that they do. So really, really honored that they took time out of their busy schedules to give us these tours and, and give us time on their calendars. So the first one that I get to talk about is the Flagstaff Downtown Library. You know, I've spent a lot of time in that library and a lot of time in that kids section of that library, which I feel is pretty magical. But there, it's a high-use library. You can just see on the slide, 82 public access computers, just the, the, the number of patrons in this library, really, really important gathering space resource, a community, there's study rooms there. And I think too, not in addition to housing the staff offices, it's important for me to mention that so many services from Flagstaff that are available to the libraries in the district, if they need help with cataloging or not, the different IT needs, there's, they can order books for those independent libraries or they don't have to. And so it's really an à la carte service in a lot of ways where they're, where they're there all the time for support, providing as much assistance as there all the time for support, providing as much assistance as each of the libraries in the district needs. Like the Eastside Library, there is a Flagstaff PD partnership with a PD there at all times. And they have some incredible events like all of the others. So some of the upcoming events at the Downtown Library, the Saturday Story Stop is this Saturday, the 29th at 10:30. And then on December 1st, there's their weekly writing group in the evening at 5:30 PM. And on Thursday, December 4th, there's the Poetry Book Club that meets at 5:30. So again, just showing some of the different offerings that they're inviting groups in. People can make connections, make friends and use that resource even more. So the Forest Lakes Library, we met Hawk there, who is the head librarian. His name is Brian Hawk and he goes by Hawk. It is located in a modular building and it it is a ride from here. And but we were really excited to to make that field trip. We didn't even eat lunch that day. We spent so much time in the library that we were fed by that process because we wanted to maximize our time there. It is a modular building, such an amazing community space. You can see on this slide, all of the different groups that meet there, but the bookshelves are on wheels in the front part of that space. They can move them out of the way and make space so that the AA meeting can come in, a charter school can come in, the quilting guild. They watch Thursday Night Football there because it's the only reliable internet in the area. So the community comes to watch Thursday Night Football. And there's a church group that meets there. They most of those groups have a shed out back to contain their supplies and they bring them in. And then when the groups aren't meeting, they roll those bookshelves back out. So it's a great space. There is a beautiful community kitchen there. And I think it's just so such a great example of meeting community with community needs. So that community kitchen is for the unhoused to cook their food so that they don't have to violate the fire restrictions if they live in the forest. And so they they also have food there for the unhoused, but most of the time Hawk says individuals don't need it. They come with their own food. They just need a place to cook so that they can be in compliance and make sure they're not in danger of creating a forest fire. So just shows how aware they are of all those that they serve. Really proud of their pickleball court. They have grab and go crafts that they leave on the front porch. And they were the only library we visited that has a rental service where they rent books to keep their collection rotating. So they have points through this collection service. They order different books. They had a lot of new release books, but they can also use their points to get a specific book for someone who comes in. There were several patrons coming in while we were there and and they knew them personally and were able to help them pick out the perfect book. And one of the things I did on the tour, much to James's chagrin, was I asked each librarian for a book recommendation, which ended up taking quite a bit of time because we got passionate speaking about books. So Hawk asked me about all the different types of books that I read and what I liked. And then he was able to make many, many different recommendations based on my reading preferences. So I'm going to just tell you a couple of the books that each of the librarians recommended to me. Hawk recommended the Longmire series. He recommended a bunch of World War II books, which I do read a lot of, including a book called Shadow Divers, which is the true story of two Americans who solved a lost mystery of World War II and a fiction book called Before We Were Yours. So I have read some of the books. I haven't gotten to any of Hawk's books yet, but I've been reading. I actually met a patron on the bookmobile in Parks who was part of a book club and recommended her book club book to me, which was called Black Cake. And I did already read that book and might read it with my book club as well. So the Fredonia Public Library, Sheena is the librarian there. She has a background in early childhood education and and that allows her to run a preschool activities in the library. It's the only one in town. There is not a preschool in Fredonia. So here here is Sheena using her background, skills and expertise to again, find a community need and meet that need. There's a sewing and a knitting group gathering and the knitting group was there while we were there, which was really fantastic. Again, moving things around to facilitate those different activities. And again, in partnership, the Page Public Library shares some of their youth interactive activities. So Page had some things, they loaned them to Fredonia so that they can both have youth in those different communities maximize those different activities that they have. The Fredonia Public Library is located in the original Fredonia Town Hall Building. And as it says on this slide, they have some settling issues there and the downstairs is unusable space. There's no elevator there, so it's empty and they use that for storage. There's also no Friends of the Library in Fredonia, so it gives them a really limited ability to get grants. There's there's no 501(c)(3) in Fredonia either to assist with that. But lately, thanks to Mark and his team, I believe that Sheena just got a new server and a new printer, so she's ecstatic about that. Sheena and her staff reward kids for reading, not just in the summer, but all the time with kids snacks. They can earn a snack and apparently the salty snacks outnumber the sweet snacks in Fredonia. But they do share a parking lot with the Fredonia Justice Court, so helps you think about that location. And they do a lot of printing there, including for hunting licenses for all the the people that go to that corner of Arizona to some of the best hunting in the state of Arizona. So meeting the needs of many. I must have read the book that Sheena asked, told me to read because I read it and I think I deleted it after I read it and I thought, oh, I might want those later. So whatever she she recommended, I think I read hers first. And next up, the Grand Canyon Community Library and Chair Horseman was with us when we visited Amy and her space. They have a really nice youth space for little kids with some new furniture. They are in need of some new board books. She was saying that those are in high demand, but they do have brand new games and book club totes. So they have, which a lot of the other libraries have, but they were brand new to them, these book bags that have enough books for everyone in the book club to check out. They do guest library cards. So people who are hiking in the canyon or visiting the Grand Canyon or camping in the campground can come in, get a guest library card and check out games. They can check out a book. So that that was great. And they do get a lot of hikers and other people who come in and check out games. They're developing a craft room with a sewing machine and their new staff member just organized that. I was there again since our original visit and it looks beautiful. So kudos to a great job there. Has a brick wall and they were talking about making each of those bricks into a book to make it in a book theme. But Amy, like a lot of the other librarians, has fantastic, big and innovative ideas. And she wants she wants to create a mural on a wall. There are she Amy was telling us that people travel to different libraries all over the country and they want to get their picture taken there. And so people want to show that there is a library at the Grand Canyon and that they were there on their trip. And she would love to have a mural and allow people to have a picture there and and also to sell some keepsake items, to sell like a book bag that says Grand Canyon Library on it or a mug or a sticker. She wants to improve the youth area. And there is they are now in since about a year, they've been in the former Chase Bank Building, which is next to the general store in the Village. The original vault is in that building, so they'd like that to be removed and do some other things. She recommended a book, which is a children's book, absolutely beautiful, called The Gift of the Broken Teacup: Poems of Mindfulness. And it's a beautiful children's book. So that was really great and we really enjoyed our time with Amy. There is a they had done a lot of improvements to the previous site they were in, which is the 1920s schoolhouse at the Grand Canyon. And this new Chase Bank site, the former Chase Bank site, needs some work. It needs new carpet. It needs other improvement and so but also they need an agreement with the National Park Service, which they they don't have presently. So hopefully they'll be able to move that forward. The Page Public Library, Debbie and Michaela and that team, bless you, do an incredible job with their use of grants, but also with their programming and events calendar. They have a lawn space out the side, which has big trees and shade. Apparently, once a year, they fill that with a foam machine. So they know how to make it really fun for the kids and the families there. They have a gigantic library of things where people can check out microscopes and luggage and panini makers and chargers. And a lot of the other libraries also had a library of things, but boy, that that Page Library of Things was gigantic. And they said the luggage is the most popular. Michaela gave us the tour and she talked in depth about how she helps people with their cell phones when they can't get something to work. She is a tech expert. She also teaches a resume building class. They have a 3D printer there. She is and that staff are the resource for everything, is what I wrote down on my notes. They also have meeting rooms. One of them has a temperature issue. It was actually freezing in there. They also have pods and spaces for people to do meetings and private work. One of those pods has a window that overlooks and it's absolutely stunning view of Page. On this Wednesday, the 26th, they're going to have a pie walk and a Thanksgiving card making event at 4:30. And one of the exciting things that they're doing in December is that, and I guess they do this every December, is that if you turn in a non-perishable food donation in the month of December, they use it as credit against or forgiveness on overdue fines. So if you have overdue book fines, it's the best time to pay them off because you can get those fines down by bringing in some non-perishable food donations. And one of the things I want to mention about Page is in 2023, it was named the best small library in America. And you can really see that when you walk in. A video was done. Thank you Supervisor Fowler. Yes, they're really proud of that. Michaela recommended a psychological thriller called The Housemaid Trilogy. So I have not read that yet, but I'll be I'll be getting to that, Michaela. I have quite the list. They're not all stacked up on my nightstand, but there's quite a pile because I I enjoy. I don't listen to them on tape. I should maybe do that as well, a combination. So Tuba City Public Library, we had a fantastic tour there. Pearl has 33 years as the Tuba City Librarian and Trish has 31 years. So two librarians with over 30 years of service, absolutely stunning. And when we walked in, I said, wow, this furniture looks so brand new. It it was new just before COVID and it is absolutely beautiful there. One of the unique things about the Tuba City Public Library is that the building is owned by the Navajo Nation and that this is the only library in the district that county facilities and Tom's team helped to maintain. The Elections Department in Tuba is downstairs and there's a nice conference room there. And when we were there, Ray Dahl was there doing an elections class. They have a library of things. One of the things that they had camping equipment and a wheelbarrow in and things to do, yard work in that library of things. And they also have a seed library, which looked really amazing. There were seeds in that seed library that I was scanning that I didn't think were in some of the other seed libraries. So that was really exciting, some of the native plants. There is also, we got a tour downstairs where their offices are and I was super excited. James has a very small child, so he was less excited, but there was an entire tub marked glitter. And I was so excited about that. And I asked if they allowed kids to use glitter in the library and they do. So you know, if their parents won't let them use glitter at home, they have an outlet for the glitter. But that was the first stop on our tour and really set the bar high. Their new arrivals in in their offerings were plentiful. And so we were talking and some of the books they recommended to me were Where the Wind Leads, The Four Winds, which is Kristin Hannah, which I have read a lot of hers, and then Conquering Crisis, which is part of a series that I had read several of the other books in, but not that one. So I was taking pictures of the books on my phone and and recommending books to Trish that I had read and she was taking pictures of those as well. So that was that was the start of it. Poor James. In the Williams Public Library, really amazing outreach and programming. Danielle is the librarian there and they have over 70 attendees at a lot of their programs. That's incredible. 17 on average in the summer. They have over 2,000 people at their trunk or treat every year. 2,000 people come to trunk or treat in Williams. And they actually don't do it on Halloween because it's such a big event that they do at the weekend before. So they're so proud of all of those programs and they really should be. And Danielle does home delivery of books to seniors in her community. So that was really impressive. She also gets books back through her children sometimes, which was similar to Amy at the Grand Canyon, who said that people just leave books on her doorstep. They know where she lives and they leave them there. So but really impressed by the care to deliver those books to seniors who are unable to to get to the library. They have a bunch of homeschoolers that take exams there. And if there weren't enough computers or they weren't able to get on, then Danielle was helping them take those exams on her personal computer even. It just shows that she really understands the needs of all the people that come in that library, no matter how old they are. And while we were there and Supervisor Antiveros joined us for that really nice visit and ran into people that she knew in the library. But also a patron joined us and shared her perspective about the library and how much it means in their community and how valued Danielle is, which was which was really nice. They are only open on a half day on Mondays because on Monday afternoons, the schools use the facility as well. So that balance of working with partners like we see in Forest Lakes also, she was awaiting 16 computers. So hopefully she's getting some of those, Mark and his team. I don't know if they've deployed those yet, but she was very excited for that to come out. They have a knitting and crochet club that will be there on the 25th from four to five. And also, they also have a writers group who will be there on December 3rd. So they they need some space and shelves, but they're doing an amazing job with the space that they have. They don't have any grants, but they're hopeful for the future because the city just hired someone with grant experience. So they were really excited to work with that person and and have some grants. All right. Oh, and Danielle's favorite book is Pride and Prejudice, which is a classic. She went for a classic, so that was really fun as well. And I've read that book a whole bunch of times. So with that, I'm going to talk it turn it over to Linda and she's going to talk about IT. And that'll be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It was just so fun hearing about those visits and all of the things you picked up about libraries. Thanks for doing such an extensive follow-up on on all the things that you learned, both of you. And then in terms of IT, really excited about getting 250 new computers that Mark and his team is now getting ready to deploy. The last I knew, the laptops were ready. The programming that has to be done ahead of time is is what takes a little time. We actually have the computers physically here, but have to be able to load everything on them and do a lot of IT stuff that I don't understand. So thank goodness we have Mark. You can see a photo of when we received all of those computers. And I will say that the man who delivered those on a flatbed, an 18-wheeler, was kind of chuckling at our put-together crew that was unloading all of these. But we got the job done. We also have in the last year added a new IT position. And so we're going to be able to really step up the efforts and address some of the things that had been put on the back burner and need more attention soon. Some other exciting things going on, new security cameras. Mark is in process of coming up with a regular schedule of visits because that is something that hasn't been done in a while. And I think that it would really be appreciated in the outlying areas. And then Eric already spoke to the server and printer in Fredonia. We're also working on the self-checkout and RFID procurement for Page. That's a that's a very large project, but it it is underway getting sourcing those items. And also there's going to be a new public printing that Mark's team is going to work on or has worked on already at the Law Library. And I think that'll be really great for the people who come in and use their self-service computers. And I think that'll be really great for the people who come in and use their self-service computers. I believe all that we're waiting on now for that is the pay machine. All of the other equipment is is ready to roll. Is that? Okay. I guess maybe questions later.
And also I did want to mention Matt Fowler had offered to help Mark and his team if they needed help because there were so many computers being distributed and they they didn't need their help at this time. But thanks to Matt and his team again for that partnership of wanting to support our libraries. So in conclusion, I hope that you, we were able to illustrate how special each library is, how much they really hear the needs of their individual community members and meet them where they are, how they provide so much more than just books. They are ways to connect with other people, their resources, their spaces, their hearts of community. There are places where people gather and they're doing incredible work. And there, as James said, all of our librarians are are meeting people in tough moments. People who are seeking quiet, who are seeking solace, who are seeking friendship in a book. Some of those people are really excited to be at their library. And you can see the kids run in. The Sedona Library even talked about how people want to get married there because the library is so beautiful. And so there's there's great emotions of joy and there's there's hard times. People are coming in to look at their their own legal issues, whether that's in the Law Library or one of the other libraries. If they don't know where to start, maybe they've started in their own library. So they they do help people navigate a range of emotion. It really is a community center in that way. They have fantastic programming and events, especially for kids. And we saw lots of instances of kids going to the libraries after school. And even in Paige, they're talking, they were talking about changing the bus routes so that the kids would be able to ride the bus to the library because of some changing of the schools there and making sure that after school kids still had access to the library. There are a variety of facilities challenges that require attention and we'll be talking through those in the budget process. Last year, when the libraries came to the budget process, they really had the big ask of the Bookmobile. And so this year we'll be able to end up talking about some other challenges and things they would like to address. We'll also be meeting with the with Heidi and Linda and Marius as part of the county managers' meetings so that we can talk through some of those things further ahead in the the budget process, which is really helpful because it will help align the City of Flagstaff's budget timeline to our budget timeline, which will be really great. And our Bookmobile has an estimated completion date because it of being ordered and completed of July 30th of 26. So we'll be able to give updates along the way of when that's going to start to to be worked up because those those types of of specialty vehicles take a minute to to get built up in the way that we order them. And we, James and I are sitting on the library council meetings. We're working on an updated IGA with the libraries. And we're really excited just about getting to have more frequent communication with the library district. They're so passionate about all that they do. And James and I are both honored to be liaisons to our amazing library. And thank you to the City of Flagstaff for the partnership, for all you do all the time for our libraries. Our library district is in a very unique partnership with the City of Flagstaff. And we're so thankful about the engagement with us to make these libraries so special for each community. So thank you to them as well. And with that, we'll go ahead and take any questions that you may have. And some of those questions might be directly for Linda as well.
Supervisor Antiveros.
Thank you, Chair. And I don't have any questions. Your presentation, between the two of you, left me with absolutely no questions. So thank you very much for that. And I would also like to publicly thank Director Tilson for getting the Bookmobile to parks. It's it it's amazing. The smallest things in some of these rural communities make all the difference in the world. So again, thank you very much for that. And my final comment is, actually Deputy County Manager Phil Pot, you said this at the beginning of your presentation and it really summed up everything. And it was great people meeting the needs of the community. And as you went through that, that was really exemplified. What a great group of people we have working in our library system. I don't even, can't even think of the word to to thank them or express them. Forest Lakes, just the uniqueness of how they are meeting those needs. So Director Tilson, I would like to ask you if you would please express our our gratitude to the librarians and let them know how much we truly appreciate and now see the job that they are doing.
Thank you. Any other comments? Supervisor Horseman.
Yes, and and also I echo Supervisor Antiveros's comments. You know, as we know, our libraries are much more than just a resource. They truly are a community center in many of our most rural areas. They are truly an essential part of the community for pretty much everything, not to mention internet and availability to to apply for jobs, to find out about jobs. And in really such an important resource. And for those from both the city and the county that are involved in libraries and our library delivery to our community, a huge, huge thank you. I do want to also note, because we do not want to forget the Bookmobile. And I'm sorry that it's down again. I actually saw it drive by me on the street a few days ago, just before I got the note that it was down again. And I'm looking forward to the new Bookmobile to come online. KJazz did a wonderful story about a ride along in our Bookmobile that I've heard a lot of comments from really folks in Phoenix and and also up in in our communities and Flagstaff. And and I want to shout out because I remember the first Bookmobile and I remember the first driver. And her name was Doris Bueller. And I I I think it's important for us to remember Doris. I see I see Supervisor Fowler's smile and she may remember her as well. And you know, it's just such a legacy of service to our communities. And looking forward to expanding our outreach and 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 hopefully doing even better for our communities through our libraries. I know the the Grand Canyon Library needs a lot of work. You didn't go through that very much, Erica, but certainly some of our libraries are in more need than others and are such an essential part of providing services to our most isolated rural communities. So thank you all for what you do. I'm sorry I wasn't there in person, but I really appreciate all all of the book recommendations. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you. And thank you for taking the time for visiting all our libraries and just meeting with our staff and with the community and just seeing how far reaching this library dream has become. Every library staff, they are so creative with the little, small facility they have and with the resource, so resourceful and the small budget that they receive. And they're always making ends. And then the large population. And I'm just really impressed, especially with Paige. We were there when the National Book Library Association, the president came. We did a video, the interviews there. It was just the most exciting time when they received that. And then, you know, during COVID, the libraries lit up their internet and were able to have people into the city. Paige, you drove by the library and you would have vehicles all the way around. And that was the that was the service they provided. And they started putting books outside because people wanted their books. And it was really special, always, always figuring out how to meet the needs of the public. That is just amazing. Every once in a while, we show a movie also at Tuba on that back site. So and you know, when we were going through the process of restoring the historic building, Crenshaw's Curly Trading Post in Tuba City, we went out to the public. We were trying to figure out, okay, everybody's buying pescetti dinners. And I was telling everyone, if you bought a pescetti dinner, you built that library. And you know, the question was, what would you like that life, the building to be? What would you like it to become? And overwhelmingly, it was a library. And so that's how Tuba City Library, we moved all the books over there and became the county library. I mean, that is so essential to a community, a community hub and just the anchor. And that's our libraries. And every community just out in the Coquenino County has a library. So thank you to all the past boards and staff and being able to figure this partnership out, make it work, figure it out and then make it work. We have affiliates. We have all kinds of partners in this network of library. So I just want to thank you all. Yes, the Law Library is amazing. I don't know if Gretchen's here. I'll be online. But each and the Bookmobile, everybody's looking forward to that Bookmobile at the gas station over there in Cameron. And and then moving on, the library is on its way. You can see, you can see, follow it along and people are announcing that it's on its way. So thank you. Really appreciate you making the time. And thank you to our staff. Thank you to all of our staff and their creativity, creativity and their resourcefulness. On behalf of the our public and talk about being a public servant and being able to carry out something seamlessly almost. And tight space too. Talk about tight space. We need to bigger facilities. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments by board members? Supervisor Bagay.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Chair, I just want to say thank you to all the staff. You know, the and then also for for all the the staff that are working under the the directors and you know, even at all the libraries, because I think, you know, that's something that we need for each community. And because it's so resourceful and making sure that, you know, we if we have questions, we can go there. A lot of our rural areas need internet services. And I and I agree with all the comments that were made by my by my colleagues. And and this is what I want to say. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments by board members? In that case, I'll make my comments. I just want to thank you, all of you for the presentation, for coming and and presenting to us in person and and sharing just all the great things that our libraries provide for our county. So cool to hear about all the different spaces that our our library district occupies and provides. I especially appreciated the conversation of addressing the the East Flagstaff Library because with the new bond, that means it's going to have to be relocated. And I just want you to know that that is on my radar and I'm constantly pushing that conversation to make sure we have adequate space. Having grown up on the east side, I know the value of that library to that neighborhood and that area. And not just that library, all the libraries become these center, central community spaces that provide internet, that provide all these different opportunities besides the great books. As a kid, I loved getting lost in the library and seeing what you could find and going to these different places with your imagination. And it's just so cool to see that being replicated, even in our smallest communities in our county. So thank you, all of you for what you do and providing these services for our county. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd just like to give a shout out. There's a volunteer at at Sedona Library who's been volunteering for over 30 years. She has her own cart and I aspire to be her someday. Judy was saying she comes in early and she's there in the morning and then she leaves and goes to Pilates. And I was like, I would like to do that someday. That's that could be a really good aspiration for for long health and and community. But I grew up going to a Bookmobile in in the Phoenix area. My brother and I would walk there in the summer when my parents were at work. And it was a really important part of my childhood. At that time, a million years ago, you could also dial the phone and listen to a book on the phone. It would play on on a loop. And so sometimes you would jump in on in the middle of the story and listen again. And it was a different book every day of the week. And so we we looked forward to that each day during the summer. And so libraries have a special place in my heart. And so I'm really excited to be able to work with this this library group. And they're they're so special and the work they do every day matters. And it makes those important childhood memories for people as well. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions or comments by board members? Do we have to resolve from the library district before we can adjourn?
So move.
Can I have a second? Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Antiveros, a second by Supervisor Bagay, or Director Antiveros and Director Bagay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And with that, we will go on our lunch recess by 1:15.
If I may, real quick here, I apologize, I have got to deal with some family issues. And so I will not be on this afternoon. All my best to my colleagues and have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Chair Horseman.
Yes, we'll miss you in the afternoon. Take care of family. Family first always. Thank you.
Take care. Bye.
I also will not be here this afternoon due to some appointments that I have rescheduled and I can't, I have to go. So happy Thanksgiving to everyone too.
Thank you. All right, we are on lunch break. We'll reconvene at 1:15. Thank you.
And I'm trying to get off, but I don't know how. I'm just going to have to turn it off.
All right, may I have your attention, please? We are back in business. Been waiting all day to do that. All right, so now, may I have a motion to resolve as the Public Health Services District Board of Directors?
So move.
We have a motion by Supervisor Antivero, so I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Moving forward for the rest of this meeting, we will only be three board members at the moment, and so, motion passes unanimously, three to zero. Next up, presentation to share with the Board of Supervisors on programs that Community Bridges is bringing to Coconino County to assist with the behavioral health needs of children's and adolescents. And with that, I will hand it over to Deputy County Manager Erica Philpott.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Very excited to have this presentation for you today. And Health and Human Services Director Michelle Axelund is here to get us started.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Board of Supervisors. Thanks for having—what I'd like to do is introduce Community Bridges. They have been in business since 1982, providing medical and behavioral health services all across Arizona, Oklahoma, and the District of Columbia. They're quite diverse. And in closest to our county, they have offices in Paterson, Springerville, St. John's, Winslow, and Holbrook. And in our county, they have offices both in Page and Freedonia. Their services include everything from community education, inpatient, housing, community integration, residential, crisis stabilization—which is all near and dear our heart. And I would like to introduce you to John Hogamboom, who is going to be on virtually here as the CEO and President of CBI to do your presentation.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is John Hogamboom. I'm the CEO of Community Bridges. I'm going to be walking through the first few slides and then hand it off to Dane Binder, who is our Director of Government Affairs and has been instrumental in bringing this program up and part of the team that will be implementing it there in the Flagstaff area. Right? Just a quick overview of our agenda today is we're going to do just introduction of the company, who we are, what our adolescent programs will look like in Coconino County and the surrounding area. And then Dane will go—and Dr. Chester will go more into what the day-to-day operations are going to look like and what services will actually be offered there to your community and to your neighbors. Next slide, please. All right. Our purpose, our mission, and our values have been the same since the day our folks founded us. We still have—one of the original founders is a board member, and we've always been very, very simple. We want to maintain the dignity of human life, and we want to be agents of positive change in the communities that we serve. So as an organization, we're a private nonprofit. We have volunteer Board of Directors, and at the end of the day, we work for you and the citizens. So our services will be implemented based upon the needs of the community, and they'll change over time as the needs of the community change also. Next slide, please. Our continuum of care, as was being described earlier, includes pretty much every element of behavioral care on behavioral health. Across Arizona, we have a very large footprint, and we've been fortunate enough to touch many communities with the services that we provide. And over the last few years, we've been able to expand outside the state and increase the amount of services and also the impact that our services have. Next slide. When we talk about the adolescent programs that we're bringing up to Coconino County, this is in partnership with Arizona Complete Health and Access. It was part of a grant that was put out a couple of years ago for really brick and mortar to develop and fill a gap, a need, in rural and frontier Arizona for children and adolescents. So what we'll be doing in Flagstaff is we're building out a behavioral health crisis stabilization unit and then eventually, it will also have inpatient attached to it also. We'll be doing something similar in Kingman, and then we'll also have a residential unit that'll be available in Holbrook. Next slide, please. Our location of our facility is going to be there in Flagstaff at 1301 West University. And of course, as Dane will be describing in a minute, Phase One will be the twenty—opening up the 24/7 crisis observation units for children and adolescents ages five to 17. And then we'll also be opening up a residential unit, which will be about 20 to 24 beds, again, for adolescents ages eight to 17. Phase Two of the operation will be building out an inpatient treatment program, which will be 16 beds for children and adolescents. Okay? Next slide. We also wanted to take this opportunity to introduce Dr. Ralph Chester, who we've been fortunate enough has chosen to move from Virginia to join our team and lead our efforts in building out these programs, who's now resident there at Flagstaff. He'll be building out the program there in Flagstaff, be our medical director, and then also overseeing the development services in Kingman and Holbrook. And then with that, I will turn it over to Dane.
All righty. So as John had mentioned, we're looking at opening up a 23-hour crisis unit there in Flagstaff. So what that looks like is a 24/7, 365, no wrong door unit, where families can bring their children and adolescents, or law enforcement may have come across an adolescent, and they're really not sure what to do with them. Oftentimes, they may be experiencing some symptoms of behavioral health need, but a crisis is always going to be defined by the family and by the youth that are experiencing it. So that's why when we say a no wrong door philosophy, that means that anyone can bring their child in for any ti—at any time, for any reason. The length of stay for that particular unit is not to exceed 23 hours and 59 minutes, and that is a Department of Licensing rule and not a Community Bridges rule. Once they arrive, they'll be evaluated by a variety of personnel, including a nurse, psychiatric nurse practitioner, or child psychiatrist, and a behavioral health clinician. The family will also receive peer support and behavioral health technician monitoring. And while they're there, we're going to coordinate with their outpatient treatment team, their pediatrician. If they have a probation officer, we'll give them a call and let them know what's going on. And if they have a Department of Child Safety, social worker, case manager will include them there as well. What we'll do after those assessments are completed is develop a plan of care or a treatment plan, and then we're going to work with the different folks to execute that. We will then have a warm handoff or a door-to-door to the next level of care. And a parent is allowed to accompany their child onto the unit in cases where that is clinically appropriate. Next slide, please. As for our residential unit that we'll be opening up, that is for youth ages eight to 17 years old. And we're looking at opportunities to always see what we can do to expand that to a younger population. But at this point in time, we're looking at that age group in particular. Folk—the adolescents that come in will have a primary diagnosis of a trauma disorder, a mood disorder, a substance use disorder, or a mild psychotic disorder. Secondary disorders of mild intellectual or developmental disability, eating disorder, or conduct disorder are permitted, but that's going to be on a case-by-case basis. When it comes to exclusionary criteria, we're looking at kids who either their needs— the services that we'll be providing within that level of care will not be able to meet their needs, or they'll not be able to make much progress in terms of treatment plan. And that's going to be kids with moderate to high intellectual developmental disabilities. Kids with primary eating disorder, that's a specialized level of care where it's a lot—there's a lot more medical integration, and those programs do exist, and that's not something we'll be able to provide on a primary basis. Additionally, kids with moderate or severe psychotic symptoms, primary conduct disorder, and sexually acting out behaviors that places other kids at risk. And when we talk about exclusionary criteria, it's always our goal to include kids. We want to find ways to accept them. So if there's something that we can do within the staff that we've got with experience, with Dr. Chester, for example, or what have you, we'll look for ways that we can bring kids in to the program instead of saying, "No, no, that's a hard no, we can't take them." We're going to look at these things on a case-by-case basis and see what we can do. If we're not able to meet the needs of the referral, what we're going to do is we're going to refer the family to a program that can meet their needs. Next slide, please. The average length of stay for the residential program is going to be determined by what insurance companies call medical necessity criteria. And then we're also going to look at how they're progressing towards the goals on their treatment plans. Admissions will include kids with suicidality, mood disorders, trauma, and/or substance use disorders, like I had touched on. And based on the claims data that we've been working with one of the insurers in Arizona, we anticipate that the majority of admissions are going to be ages 12 to 17, but we will accept kids ages eight to 11, like I had mentioned. And part of the reason why I think that we see the majority of admissions being ages 12 to 17 is because there's not a lot of residential programs out there that take that ages eight to 11 cohort. So we do anticipate filling a gap in your community for being able to serve those youths. Scheduled activities include school, and that's either going to be virtual or hosted on-site. There will be group treatments, there's going to be medication management, individual therapy, family therapy, parent psychoeducation, which is a fancy way of saying that we're going to bring the parents into a virtual kind of classroom, if you will, and provide them with some education on what's going on with their child, how to help prepare for their child to come home, and ways that they can support their child once they do return to the home. It'll also include time to exercise or play. We have a fantastic building where we've got a good yard out back where they'll be able to play, and we're looking at bringing in a variety of games and different healthy ways for kids to just engage in exercise and play. And that's kind of part of the learning process, if you will, for managing some of these illnesses that we'll be treating. And then we're going to be encouraging family visitation, we'll have outings, and it'll include time to unwind. Next slide, please. We've identified several stakeholders that we want to make a point to develop relationships with because we know that when it comes to these concentric circles, there's going to be kids that meet right in the middle there. That'll include first responders. Drop-offs to our crisis centers will never be turned away. The total drop-off time for first responders is not to exceed five minutes. However, first responders may wish to stay longer. In cases of kids, that may be true, so they're certainly welcome too. In cases of unaccompanied minors, CBI is going to work with the Department of Child Safety to get emergency admit permissions. When it comes to juvenile probation in courts, Casey Lightfoot, the juvenile probation director, and Judge Kircher are two of the folks that we've identified as stakeholders. We've had some conversations with those folks and look forward to collaborating with them. The Department of Child Safety, of course, the schools, outpatient behavioral health providers and pediatricians' offices, and tribal entities are a big stakeholder that we'd like to develop a good relationship with. CBI does employ a tribal liaison who's dedicated to connecting with tribal nations across Arizona, and we're exploring ways to include traditional healing for families when that's appropriate and available. Next slide, please. The county officials, we've been in touch with, as you know, with Michelle as the Director of Health and Human Services, the County Attorney's Office, the County Manager's Office, and of course, the Board of Supervisors. I've had the opportunity to talk with some of you at County Supervisor Association events, as well as those NACO events. Additionally, we're working closely with managed care organizations, access, and hospitals. Hospitals are another big stakeholder of ours. We've had some conversations with Flagstaff Regional, and we're going to be working with other nearby hospital emergency departments. And the reason that we work closely with them is because the emergency department, as you know, is not always the best place for kids or families to go when they're having a behavioral health need. If it's a broken arm, the emergency department is the right place. But when it comes to issues of anxiety, depression, suicide, and substance use, generally, a specialty provider can be the preference for those families. And we work with the emergency department to transfer kids with these behavioral health needs to our crisis unit to clear up space for more medical emergencies. And there are going to be instances when a child is dropped off to CBI that needs emergency medical treatment. That's just kind of the nature of our crisis program. And in those cases, a physician or nurse practitioner will order a sendout to the hospital. But CBI will proactively be following up with the hospital to bring the child back once they're medically cleared. Next slide, please. As for contacts, those are listed here, and if you have any questions, we are happy to entertain those.
Thank you. Are there any questions by board members? Supervisor Antiveros? All right, thank you for that presentation. Look forward to seeing the programming come online as soon as possible. As we've noted before, our youth and our community need that extra support, and so I'm glad to see this program coming online.
Thank you for letting us have this presentation.
Thank you. Oh, Supervisor Fowler?
Actually, Community Bridges will operate as their own entity, serving our community through the behavioral health contracts through access and the managed care organization.
And where's the location going to be?
Over on university here in Flagstaff.
Okay. And then, I know that this has been coming for some time, and it's finally here. I think it's—I'm really happy that the partnership is going to be established. We work with six tribes in Coconino County, and then we have the outlining communities. I know that, you know, just—the headquarters is in Flagstaff, but just understanding that the rural communities and tribal communities, that partnership is going to be so important, especially in our rural communities off tribal lands. They really need this type of support. A lot of times, there's really no place for them to come to, and I like to make sure that they're also working with our juvenile detention center because they have that Friday session over there where anyone can come in and bring their children in and just be able to have their children be taught—to someone else. And I think that kind of service is just really important. So I'm happy that this is coming on now, or it's going to happen now.
Thank you, Supervisor John. Or Dane, do you want to add to that conversation?
Sure. I'm happy to take—if Supervisor Fowler, for example, if you've got a particular community that you'd like us to kind of focus our outreach to, we're happy to take those referrals and talk with folks in those communities. Like John mentioned there at the beginning, our goal is to be of service to the communities within Coconino County with this program. So if any of the supervisors or any of the folks listening to this meeting would like us to outreach a particular person, community, department, whatever, please feel free to email us, and we're happy to outreach those folks.
Well, I would say that you're right—you're working with the right person, Michelle. She knows all our partners. We have Office in Page that goes out to Freedonia. We also have, you know, outreach into the Navajo communities. So they pretty much are working together with all the healthcare providers. But just another support like this is very much needed. Our children really need this attention. Then we have our school system. You know, we have our various types of schools on Navajo Nation and our tribal lands, you know, that are not all public schools, and they all need the support as well, just so they know. I don't know how—but working with Michelle, that's the first step. And then helping out as county supervisors from our end, we can do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Supervisor Antiveros?
Thank you, Chair. And Ms. Axeland, I know that your finger is on the pulse of all of these communities and the outreach that this is going to serve, and including—you know, I always seem to pick on, you know, Will�ям's Grand Canyon, Tucson, like all of those. There is no community outside the reach of this help, correct?
Correct.
I knew that, I knew that. I just wanted to state that for the record, so thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate you allowing this presentation to happen.
Thank you. And I just have a question. How does this program correlate to the King Street renovations? Is that something different? Is this in place of that? That part, for me, is still unclear.
Actually, this is very different. Thank you for your question. So the King Street renovation is all about prevention, working with that lower level. But sometimes, when acute anxiety, depression kick in for our youth, they really need that hospital inpatient piece, and we don't have enough beds in our community as Coconino County. CBI, Community Bridges, is stepping into that space to help the hospital. And once the children get stabilized, then we can work on the prevention level of continuing what they have already started.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it. All right. County Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Michelle, thank you. And just want to note that with behavioral health, mental health, suicide prevention, we know it's the holiday season, and we know all of the emotions that the holiday season can bring. And so, we also know that Health and Human Services will be with our community for suicide prevention during the holidays, the importance of checking in on people, and really pushing out those communications and how we can be of assistance. So I just want to note that with this conference.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, can I get a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors?
So move.
We have a motion by Supervisor Antiveros. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Supervisor Fowler. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Next up, Item 11, Discussion and Update Regarding State and/or Federal Legislative and/or Administrative Affairs. And with that, I'll pass it over to our Government Affairs.
Good afternoon, Chair Vasquez, or Vice Chair Vasquez, Acting as Chair, and board members. So most of my federal and state update, I guess I'll start with federal. So Supervisor Fowler was in DC. I traveled with her for the Rural Action Caucus fly-in. She's one of the vice chairs on the Rural Action Caucus. It was a really, I think, productive fly-in. I don't know if people were just excited that the government's reopened, so they were happy to talk to people. But we met with many congressional staffers, not only our delegation, but other delegations as well with the NACO group, and I thought the staff was unusually responsive and attentive, more so than what I'm used to. So I think that was encouraging. So on the first day that we got there, we met with our delegation. We did meet with Congressman Crane, who's always been generous with his time. I think every time we've been to DC, we've actually gotten to be with the congressman himself and the Chief of Staff, not just the Legislative Director. Chief of Staff Greg Smith was actually out this time, so that's the first time they had a ledge director instead of the chief in. But his office was very responsive. We also met with staffs from Senator Kelly and Senator Gallego's office, staff for the newest member of Congress, Adalita Grahalva. So we got to welcome her to Congress through her staff. And we also met with—or briefly, we got tickets to be on the House floor from Ansari's office, so we kind of did a little drop in there. So we worked our delegation pretty well. And then with the NACO group, we had a really good lineup. Lena and I traveled with a couple members from West Virginia, and then lobbyists from Resource Rural. We got to get a really broad cross-section of the House—or of the senators. We met with Majority Leader Thune's staff. We met with staff for Senator Justice in West Virginia, Senator Schiff in California, his staff, Booker's staff in New Jersey, and then Ed Committee Chair Boozman's staff from Arkansas. So very big, powerful group of bipartisan senators. They all listen to our rural issues. We also met with Navajo Nation Washington Office. I will mention on the—in terms of Coconino County, almost every office, they have multiple images of pictures taken in Coconino County. I don't know if they knew Lena was coming, and they just put up Horseshoe Bend, the Wave, the Slot Canons, the Grand Canyon, but Kelly and—yeah, Kelly and Gallego have like three or four pictures from Coconino County and not much of the rest of the state. And then, as Lena mentioned, in Senator Schiff's office, there's a picture of Monument Valley, which Lena pointed out. And while that's not in Coconino County— And while that's not in Coconino County, it's much closer to Coconino County than it is to California. So we did make note of that. So when it comes to scenery, Coconino County wins. It's all over Capitol Hill. So that's kind of exciting. During the meetings, we did discuss, yep, a lot of issues, sort of with the NACO group, broadband expansion, rural healthcare access, infrastructure, economic development, strengthening tribal partnerships, enhancing community resilience. In particular, we also asked them to support, and we'll talk to the board a little more about this, but the Rural Partnership and Prosperity Act, which brings targeted investments into rural areas. That's a bipartisan bill that's been introduced in the House. People leading it are Andrea Salinas, a Democrat from Oregon, and David Valladega, a Republican from California. And it seems like our members and many other people are supportive of that. And that is a way of getting targeted investment into rural areas. And then specifically, some of the things Supervisor Fowler talked about, Highway 67, getting that plowed to the Grand Canyon, FEMA reform, talked about the insurance crisis some and how we can deal with that, making sure we get good neighbor authority in our documents. And then, of course, most specifically, North Rim Recovery Act or something to deal with recovery of North Rim. Representative Crane has a bill on that. We also got a couple of different, really good ideas, but different approaches from his office and from the Senate offices. And we encourage them to kind of work together and figure out what makes the most sense. But Representative Crane is interested in looking at Great American Outdoors Act funds. That's about 1.3 billion a year from gas and energy royalties. Of course, if we use that for North Rim recovery, that could take up a significant chunk of it. But that was the first thing he was going to look at. The two senators, Gallego and Kelly, their staffs were looking at trying to get North Rim recovery dollars into a disaster supplemental, so they could possibly work with Crane. It could be both. It doesn't have to be either or, but a couple of different approaches. The one thing maybe working against us in a disaster supplemental is that fortunately from a human perspective, because there haven't been any major hurricanes this year, but it may make it more difficult to onboard members from the South and East who maybe don't get the whole wildfire thing, or may not think that a disaster supplemental is necessary. But most years, at the end of the year, there is such a bill. And so if there is one, our senators will work hard to include some funding for that. So I think on that note, they'll probably be looking for price tags. So we'll try to track down what kind of numbers could be put in that. And that would apply for the Great American Outdoors Act money too at some point. It's good to have a dollar figure so people know what we're asking for. So we're working on that. And then I will note too, that the person from Resource Rural complimented Supervisor Fowler on her storytelling, thought it was really good and thought that I had good stats and one-liners to supplement that. So whatever that means, that was encouraging. Then on the state level, I will mention that I attended the ACO meeting on Friday virtually. And I'm not going to share a bunch about that, but a really important thing from our perspective, they did talk about the ACO Short Term Rental Bill, which ACO is kind of working with CSA to, you know, figure out what that looks like. But we, they did mention there that Senators Meznard, Senator Kavanaugh, and Senator Bliss are all likely to want to support or co-sponsor that. That's a pretty big deal because I think last time, leadership wasn't on board, Senator Bliss was. But Kavanaugh and Meznard would add a lot of strength to that. So there's a chance that something might actually move this time around. And we did also see Senator Kavanaugh in the airport at DC. So any flight from DC or Flagstaff, we always run into people we know. It's like a really small world in the political realm. So he was there and we got a chance to thank him for his stuff. We didn't lobby him because he was waiting for a plane that was running late, but we did talk to him and just tell him who we were. The final thing I'll add is that Sean Johnson was also traveling. He's been to the, excuse me, to the rural, a rural water working group down in the valley. But also, he attended the Western Governors Association meeting this past week. And a lot had come out of that. Some of the things that they're talking about is the same things that came up in, at NACO and just kind of things that are on everybody's agenda. Rural broadband expansion is being critical for infrastructure in rural areas. They want farm bill reauthorization and rural stability, strengthen state and federal coordination, and all of the above energy strategy. And then they did talk about the rising energy demand from AI and data centers. They kind of bypassed talking about water, from what Sean told me. And water's a pretty big deal for data centers. So that was an oversight on their part. Going back to the federal, one thing I forgot to mention is we also on Friday, or on, yeah, on the last day of the fly-in, I guess it was Thursday, not only did we meet with the Navajo Nation Washington Office, but also the administration, Trump Administration's USD Rural Development Chief of Staff addressed us at the meeting. And the good news is I did get, just a few minutes ago, Supervisor and Fowler, I got an email from them for follow-up and they remembered everything Supervisor Fowler asked them because they had four things that they specified that they're going to look into, including things that were a little bit outside of their area of focus. But they were even going to look at tracking down like NRCS funds that are tied up and stuff. I will say, NACO sometimes has had a challenge getting people from the administration to show up. But the ones that do show up, I have found, have been very responsive and good about follow-ups. So the people that actually answer the call to address us, kind of like we had with SBA in the summer, they've been really good. And we've had good contact with the administration in terms of them responding back to us on some of the follow-ups. So hopefully that'll, that'll lead to some progress in some of those areas. And with that, I'll stop unless people have questions.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions by board members? Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you. Thank you. It was a really, you know, each of these trips to DC, there's always staff that do a work prior to going. I just want to thank the board, our board priorities, and then staff putting together the necessary information from the departments. And then also just talking points and then having our priorities set and how we're going to be speaking to these individuals that this leadership we're going to be working with and meeting with, even in the discussion with the Rural Caucus or Disaster Team or, you know, it's just, it's really important to have that information. So Coconino County provides its, you know, our priorities and be able to provide that to NACO and to Congress. And so with that, it was very, very productive as a result of that because we have the foundation we're standing on. And then I'm able to, we're also able to text and say, okay, Assistant Director for Rural Development is here. What is it that I need to ask? And Eric right away sent messages back and John did too. So based on that, we're able to ask our questions and be able to have some follow-up opportunities like Keith says. So, you know, our intention there was, you know, the, our economy here and just the impact of the federal actions, impact from the, this administration, Congress, and what the impacts are locally. And that's what we went back to talk to, that's what we were able to deliver. You know, everyone saw the Grand Canyon North Rim Lodge on fire. So every single meeting that we had, everyone acknowledged that, yes, I remember that, you know. And so, so we're able to, with that opening, say there's legislation coming. So there may be, if there's no disaster bill that's introduced, there may be, most lightly, an anonymous bill. And that's where it would go. So that's what we're working towards. So it was a very, in that sense, it was very productive. Want to thank Bob and Anna for scheduling the meetings that we had with our own congressional delegation. Always very productive. They know what we're, where we are. We were able to deliver a letter with where we are locally in terms of the North Rim because on our last visit, that's what they asked for. Because they use that as a talking point. So the more information we provide, like we told them about the recovery team that's here and how we're going to be going out in the community and getting feedback, they were very interested in that. And then today, Congressman Crane is supposed to be in Prescott. And then he's, if he can get a helicopter, he's going to be at the North Rim, do another follow-up there and then be able to have that. These local information is really important for us. So anyway, I want to thank the staff for putting this information together and making it really, being able to just talk about it and not have to figure, anyway, be able to have that information there before us. That was very helpful. And then what else did we, we even talked about, Impact 8, Secure Rural Schools, PILT, right, work that in, homeowners insurance, that's another one that is on the minds of rural counties. The other one was EMS, that's another one that is on, that was brought out. And, you know, we have our situation out in Fredonia where there is, and we're still trying to, thanks to Michelle, we may be getting an ambulance out there and be able to have an ambulance service in that region. So thank goodness Kane County Hospital is still running there. We were even able to talk about that. So it was really, really good information and our information we provided and we learned from, from our visit and continue to do so. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Supervisor Ontiveros.
Thank you. And it is just a comment. I appreciate this update because I was wondering what all had transpired the week that you were in DC. So I appreciate this. And I think the word productive may be an understatement based on this presentation. That is really good news. I'm really glad to see the bipartisan work that is being done because these issues are simply not partisan issues. They are bipartisan. So it does my heart good to know that we're all working together on this. And the community meetings that Supervisor Fowler just mentioned that we're going to be doing, those are going to be useful. And I really think, now that I'm listening to this, that we need, when we're at these community meetings, that we may just want to add a little bit of information in there, that this is what's happening at the federal level as well, that this, this is a pretty broad-reaching effort that everyone is trying to make. It's not just us locally. So I'm glad to know that everyone is aware of, my goodness, from homeowners insurance to PILT, SRS, the Grand Canyon, and it sounds like everything in between. I think our counties' needs were very well represented and I'm glad to hear that.
And I think it's easy to get gated in this environment if you kind of watch the news and stuff. And I guess on our little bit on the House floor, we might have saw that partisan side of things. But what was really interesting to me in the offices is I felt like this was one of the best legislative visits I had. And it was really interesting, I felt like the staffers were talking about cooperating, like Schiff's staff was, oh yeah, well, go over and talk to the Ag people on the majority side. And there was no, like, it was very nonpartisan, like, we need to deliver for rural Arizona. The other thing that I got from it is everybody was really moved about the Grand Canyon story. Like, that's an international treasure. And so it didn't matter, they could be from New Jersey, West Virginia, Arkansas, they all cared about that. So as soon as Supervisor Fowler started talking, everybody really paid rapt attention to that part and how can we help rebuild, even though they know the price tag might be expensive. I felt like there was bipartisan commitment to figure something out now. The devil's probably in the details and who knows what it'll get bogged down with, with other stuff. But I do feel like, not only from our delegation, but from across a lot of the people we talked to, that there will be a commitment to try to figure out something there.
Yeah. I did invite everyone to come and take their vacation out here. I told them that we have great tour guides out here. But, you know, the interesting thing was that it was just across the board, from New Jersey, Cory Booker, over to California, and just the, we covered the country. And the discussion next time with the Rural Caucus, this is the rural, there are over 2,000 counties in the country that are rural. So there were about 30 representatives that were there. And they're talking about maybe next time, having a two-day visit rather than a one-day visit. That way we cover more, see more congressional delegations. Our group mainly focused on senators, others focused on the House side. So, but, and then others were in between mix. And the neat thing about this one was that we had partners that are very knowledgeable in the economic development or in some kind of field that went with us, like transportation. You know, I was thinking about you with the transportation, you know, and I was, you know, we just were really a mixed group of people that were able to talk from whoever that started having conversation. It was just a flow of conversation with people that we haven't gone on the field with, out on the hill with. And we were able to really just carry the message that this may be happening here in our county, however, but it's across the board. We're able to talk about the farm bill as well. The farm bill, this rural resource development, I can't remember the name, that's going to give us an opportunity as counties, be able to partner with the partners that we're so good at, you know, in economic development, with tribes, with our local communities. That is really going to be really important. And that's what we brought up with at Navajo Nation. Navajo Nation had the same issues that we, we work with, you know, our partnership with transportation, with economic development. They wanted to know where we are with the Grand Canyon North Rim, wanted to know about if we're registering or helping people with the RICA, which is, you know, their radiation, can't remember the name of it.
Compensation Act.
Yeah, Compensation Act, wanted to see where we are with that. I mean, it's just really just providing updates. What can we help you with? How can we help? That was the main thing is, and that was the conversation with every visit that we had as well. How can we help you? What else can? So each of the members, each of the individuals we met with, we're going to be doing a follow-up. And I know Eric, I think, already contacted his staff saying, let's put a letter together and send it out to each of them. So we have more contacts, we have more network that we establish on this trip than we've ever had.
And I'm glad you brought up transportation because NACO Transportation Committee, the staff person who chairs that committee, Ben Gilzendorf, was actually the person who came with our cohort. So Aranimo knows him pretty well. That's his, the committee he's on at NACO. And he did bring up surface transportation and passing a couple of times and some of the issues we have around that.
Thank you. And I'm aware that NACO did have a fly-in recently on transportation. I wish I could have gone, but it was just too much with everything going on. So appreciate the update. And it's always good to hear about how, you know, as we always say, we punch above our weight class, you know, and part of that is those frequent meetings, meeting with the right people and bringing the right stories. I think we do a really good job of sharing the issues and how it relates to our county directly so that it's not vague, but it's personal stories. And so thank you for this update. And it's good to hear that we're making progress on these, these issues on the federal level. Any other questions or comments on the Fed side? Okay, any updates on the state side?
No, other than the one I gave on the short-term rentals. I think that's where we're at for now. Obviously, with the legislature gearing up, we'll, we'll be dealing with a lot of state issues coming up. But I think we're kind of in a quiet moment for now there.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate the update. All right. Next item, Discussion and Review Possible Direction Regarding Board of Supervisors Planning
planning calendar. County manager.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez, members of the board. And Lindsay, if you don't mind pulling up the calendar, Erica Philpott will present the calendar today. We do have, in terms of upcoming meetings, hearing from Flagstaff Shelter Services, we'll have a minor change, you probably will note that, but it does impact. So we're trying to accommodate for the governor's schedule to come up for shelter services. We were looking at December 4th, Thursday. The governor's now coming on the 9th. That does impact our board meeting schedule, so we'll need to look at that and how to accommodate. Sorry to steal your time.
Thanks, Andy. It was good to hear Keith talk about some quiet because as we all mentioned earlier today, we have entered the holiday season and so it's a busy time coming up. There's not, there's not a lot of quiet. So just wanted to go over a few items with you. So obviously this week, the Thanksgiving holiday, and this Saturday, November 29th, is the Williams Christmas Parade and Tree Lighting at 6:30. So that is here upon us already. And then the item that Andy was speaking of is on the planning calendar is December 4th, which is the Lantern opening. So that Lantern opening on December 4th is being moved to December 9th. And that is to accommodate the governor's schedule. We have a board meeting on December 9th, as you know, and so if the Lantern opening is at 10:30 on the 9th, we'll need to make some changes to the December 9th board meeting in order to allow everyone to be there. And some of the things that we talked about actually over lunch is the possible moving of the Post Disaster Economic Recovery Plan presentation to allow for additional community meetings. So if we move that off of the 10:45 and then possibly even move the Quarterly Capital Construction Projects update from Tom Hanecheck to either earlier in the morning or a different day, that would help open up that morning to allow all of you who wanted to and were able to, to go to the Lantern opening. So that's some of the things. We'll need to work out the proclamation on that day as well. And then in the afternoon, we have some time certain items. But if the Lantern opening is at 10:30, we'll be able to make those afternoon items as well. So wanted to let you know that we just found out about that since lunch, so we'll be working on that and working with Lindsay to see what we can move around.
Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you. On December 9th, you know, we have our, we just had a meeting. We have our Recovery Plan Community Meetings. If those meetings do work out, I may not be here for that meeting.
Thank you, Supervisor Fowler. And that's an excellent point. That whole week, the week of December 7th, there are some of the Post Disaster Economic Recovery Plan meetings. And so, and it appears there might be more on that day. So we'll be really mindful of that as we look at the schedule and see what we can do to work some different things in on the 9th, make some adjustments. Between now and the 9th, on December 4th, the Tucson Holiday Lighting Event at the Tucson Sports Complex. Also on December 6th, which is Saturday, the City of Flagstaff Tree Lighting at Heritage Square. And on December 8th, the Community Stone Soup Dinner at Market of Dreams. So those items on the first page.
Before you move forward, on the December 9th discussion, if we do move the 10:45 so that we can all attend the Lantern opening, which would probably be a good idea considering how long it's been taking to get that open, and it'd be great for us to have a presence there. I think for me personally, I would rather start earlier than go later in the day for that meeting. So I just wanted to put that out there. I don't know if my colleagues have any feedback on that, but I just wanted to share that.
And I know that I've notified my office and county management that I'm not going to be here on December 9th for the meeting at all. So much is going on that week that I'm going to be gone. I'm actually saddened I'm not going to be able to be a part of some of these events and meeting.
Okay. Thank you. And then, so Supervisor Fowler, you weren't going to be there for the 9th either? Is that correct?
Yes, and we have, we have a consultant team that's going to be here that whole week, doing the recovery plan from the fires that took place on the North Rim. And they're going to be in my district. So on the 8th, we scheduled, now we're looking at the 9th, 11th, and that whole week. So I'm going to be needed at these meetings to help facilitate.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that's noted by county management as we're planning, looking forward, because it looks like that meeting will only be three of us. And it doesn't look like, based on the time we have before New Year's, that we probably don't have time to reschedule that meeting at some other time. So I'll leave that in your hands to kind of figure out how to make that work, but I think it's important that we share that with you now, considering it is two weeks away.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And we were just discussing the community meetings, Post Disaster Economic Recovery Community Meetings at lunch. And so we'll work on this schedule on the 9th and also finalize the Post Disaster Economic Recovery Meetings in the communities, make sure we understand those schedules, and then look at the possibility of having an earlier start on the 9th. So possibly we could do the proclamation earlier and maybe facilities, or if we need to move those to another day, we'll look at all of that. So we'll get back to you as soon as we have information. But thank you for discussing the quorum considerations as well, really important as we move forward. And also on December 9th, part of the reason we can't go later on that day is that there are two evening items that day. The NAU Holiday Reception is at 5:00 and then Nexus will be here on that day. They're presenting, Bob and Anna are presenting at 4:00 PM on the 9th to the board, and then at 5:00 PM, having a dinner conversation as well. So there was also some conversation of dividing and conquering to cover those evening meetings on the 9th. And then we also have listed the ACO Conference, the 9th through the 11th. So again, lots going on, super busy week, and we'll just finalize who's going to be where to make sure that we can get everything covered. And then on the 10th, December 10th, is the Joe Montoya Senior Center Holiday Lunch, which is very exciting. And then on December 11th, the CSA Medium County Caucus Meeting and the CSA Board of Directors Meeting. December 11th, the Justice Bus at the Loop Chapter House. I actually thought that there was a possibility that that, they were not moving that, they were changing some of the focal point of that justice bus. So we'll make sure, Diana's watching, and we'll make sure, I think it might be a quorum squashing event now. So we'll double-check and make sure that we have a note on the calendar for all of you. December 13th, which is a Saturday, is the Flagstaff Holiday Light Parade. And then December 16th, the EOLTE Holiday Celebration. And I want to mention, not on this calendar, but something to add, December 13th, which is a Saturday, the same Saturday as the Holiday Tree Lighting and Flagstaff, is the Western Agency Meeting at CCC, and that starts at 9:00 AM. And both Michelle Axeland and Matt Fowler will be presenting in the morning. And I believe that County Attorney Emma Barker and Sheriff Axeland are presenting in the afternoon. And that is the event where the sheriff's office provides lunch, the jail provides lunch. So wanted to, we'll get that on the calendar for next time, but that is on December 13th.
And everyone is invited. So what we do is all of Western Navajo, there's 18 chapters that come, we're the Flagstaff chapter. And what we do is during lunchtime, we serve, we cater to the, to the community leaders that come. So that's a big, a big event, a highlight event of the whole Western Navajo chapter meetings.
Just out of curiosity, will quorum be posted for that? So that, okay.
Yes, a quorum will be posted and we'll make sure to get that on the planning calendar as well.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And then on December 16th, Vice Chair will be virtual on that day. And so we'll add a note to the planning calendar about that. But you can see, we start at 2:00 PM for that special session, starting with the flood control, which is time certain. And then we have, then we'll do consent and action items after that time certain flood control district issue. And you can see, we have the New Year's Proclamation, City of the Year Award, and the recognition of City of Flagstaff and Flagstaff Dark Skies Coalition for Dark Sky City of the Year Award. So bless you. So a very exciting consent with those proclamations and recognitions. And then we'll go into the quarterly update for the district budgets with Siri Mulaney, followed by a 6:00 PM public hearing for a zoning code amendment. And that's a CUP appeal, thanks to, yes, please add.
I just wanted to ask if, I know in previous years, one of the things that came up since we're getting to the new year, in January is MLK Weekend, and we've talked about possibly doing proclamation for that or whatnot. Usually, we wait until February for Black History Month, but last year became evident that we were kind of behind the times in the sense, because City of Flagstaff did an MLK, and we were at these events and we hadn't done anything. And so I just wanted to plant that seed and put that out there and see if that's something we want to consider for an early January board meeting.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I think that's an outstanding recommendation and perhaps we can have that on January 13th at the special session there of the proclamation then. So we'll make note of that and make sure that we do that.
Thank you.
And Jay wanted to comment on the CUP appeal and the zoning code amendments that we're doing on December 16th.
Thank you, Erica. Mr. Vice Chair and supervisors, thank you. It's been a pleasure to sit here today and visit with you this meeting. I just wanted to get out in front of something that came up near the end of last week regarding the hearing that coincides with the zoning code amendment. So those are for a House Bill 2928. It's been, we've been talking about this for months. It's something that the City of Flagstaff has actually done a year ago. So the state legislature started with Title IX cities, and now it's taken effect into counties, and it has to do with the additional accessory dwelling units that are allowed on a parcel. We do have the provision to require one of the additional ADUs. So currently, we amended our zoning code years ago to allow for an accessory dwelling unit on any parcel. This state legislation is requiring counties now to allow for an additional accessory dwelling. So there can be one detached and one attached. And on parcels that are an acre or larger, you can have yet another detached accessory dwelling unit. Our counterparts at the city have not seen this really proliferate, just because my perspective is that their parcel sizes generally are quite a bit smaller than the counties. So it could happen. But in that proposed legislation from House Bill 2928, there's a provision that requires, or excuse me, that allows the jurisdiction to require one of those units, if they choose an additional ADU, to be affordable, which we worked with HHS to figure out a way to manage that. And there's also a provision that allows jurisdictions to require the owner of the owner of one of those units be present on-site. It doesn't specify if they live in the accessory dwelling unit or the primary. And we are writing that into the, it's the language that's directly out of state statute, or excuse me, the House bill. But we realized late last week that in order to provide that nexus between the zoning code amendment and our short-term rental ordinance, we had to change and add, just add, not change, but add one sentence to our STR ordinance that specifies that the owner, if there's an additional, meaning two or more accessory dwelling units, must live on-site. So I just wanted to give you that heads up that that's going to be added to this. We're still waiting final legal review, but it's very likely that'll be added to this evening as well. It did go through the commission, even though the short-term rental ordinance is a standalone ordinance, it's not part of the zoning code, and there was no contention. So just wanted to give you the heads up. And also that we will be visiting with you each individually or in pairs, Jess and I will, with regards to the CUP for the horse boarding, Fox Ranch.
Please, Supervisor Antiveros.
The CUP appeal that's going to be coming before the board, has any other supervisor asked for a site visit?
Mr. Vice Chair and Supervisor Antiveros, not as of yet.
Okay. I think, and I found that sometimes, well, oftentimes on some of the controversial issues where there is great opposition, that it is so beneficial to actually go to the site and look at it because we get it explained and detailed by others, but to actually see it for yourself, I have, I've told numerous people it is so important to do that. That's something that I would like to do, and I would just like to invite if there's another commissioner that might like to come along, or not commissioner, but supervisor that might like to come along. We'll do whatever I can to adjust my schedule to fit theirs, but I think it would be invaluable if at least one or maybe a couple of us actually get our eyes on this particular situation. So.
Mr. Vice Chair and Supervisor Antiveros, thank you for that. I will take that back to the office and we will send out a notification. That's what we're looking to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. On December 18th, Thursday, the Williams Senior Center Holiday Lunch, again, very exciting time to spend with the seniors and serve lunch to them and join our HHS colleagues. And then on December 31st, obviously, the Pine Cone Drop at noon, 10:00 PM, and at midnight. Quorum posted for each of those. And we have the Christmas holiday, the New Year's holiday. And then I want to draw your attention right below that because I feel like it blends in so much, the January 9th Board Retreat Day. It's in blue, and that is a date that we've been saving, and it seemed a long time away when we first saved that. But just wanted to draw your eye to that because, especially on some previous copies of the planning calendar, when that blue line was on top of the January 13th blue line, it really blended together. So just wanted to make sure everyone has that on their calendar. And then you can see, January 9th, Friday, also Judge Doughty's vestiture ceremony has been posted for a quorum as well. And that takes us into the January 13th Special Session Meeting, which doesn't have a lot on it yet. But if there are several public hearings, we might want to start a little earlier than 4 o'clock. So that takes us to the beginning of January. If you'd like me to proceed, I can, or otherwise, I'll just stop there.
I'm over, I want you to stop there. I mean, I'm already knee-deep in the holiday season, but I will just say, when I saw the Martin Luther King Day, I do support Vice Chair Vasquez's suggestion on that. I think that that's a good suggestion on a proclamation for that. But I know I've had my fill on the calendar. Well, only because I maxed out.
There are a lot of events. A lot. This is one of the busiest times of year with all of these events on so many weeknights, and so that was a lot of information.
It was, yeah.
Yes. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have discussion update from county manager regarding possible community, regional, or administrative matters.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez, members of the board. Just wanted to note real quick, we, with budget schedules, we are beginning our budget kickoff with departments in mid-December, I believe. We're working on that schedule as well. And that allows us internally to get started with budgeting for salaries, benefits, those costs, et cetera, so we can get our baseline of where we are financially, then going into the budget process with you. So just wanted to note that, that we're really, we're pushing ourselves pretty hard with that. And thank you, Erica, for going over the planning calendar. So in the interest of time, I'll just stop there. If you have any questions, let me know and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, item 14, roundtable. Based on the fact that there's only three of us, I would suggest that maybe we table roundtable till next meeting. Can I have some comments from my board members?
I am in support of that. And the one thing that I wanted to hear the most about, I've already heard, and that was Supervisor Fowler's trip to DC. So I'm good postponing to another meeting.
Supervisor Fowler?
I am. I am also on the NACO Rural Energy Academy. President NACO, I'm also on the Board of Directors for NACO. So Keith and I are going to be attending the NACO Fall Board of Directors Meeting. NACO Fall Board of Directors Meeting in Texas, that's where our JD is from, our, our NACO President, it's usually in their hometown, and the Rural Energy is going to be in Portland, near Portland, Oregon, so, those are upcoming meetings that are coming up, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you, in that case, I don't have much to share right now beyond what we could be talking about at the next meeting, and so in that case, we are at the end of our agenda, unless there's anything else that anybody would like to talk to or about, we are adjourned. Thank you everyone.